Recording in progress.
Chair of Nutter, we're ready to begin. Yes, Chair of Nutter?
Present.
Chair of Nutter, can you make sure your microphone is on?
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Patel?
Present.
Commissioner Nugent?
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
And Commissioner Williams is absent.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. We are excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain unavailable or remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. The conference ID is eight five three, five six seven two, eight four six six, and the passcode is zero nine seven, four three one. Ashley, could you please read the consent calendar?
Yes. Item number one, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes Approval. Approve the minutes of the regular meetings of May 23, 2023, June 13, 2023, and June 27, 2023.
Thank you. Is there any member of the commission who would like to pull this item from the consent calendar? If any members of the public wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for the consent calendar items only.
Chair of Nutter, I just wanted to confirm. So all of these public speaker slips say agenda item number one, but they are for the item that's being presented, like the post and beam, correct? Just want, okay, just want to double check. But it does look like we have one public commenter on Zoom. Timer is three minutes.
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay. Michael Grubb, you can go ahead and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. It's a general comment. My general comment is that I urge the Planning Commission and the City Council to stop-
I'm sorry to interrupt, Michael, but our general public comment period is after the consent calendar item.
Okay. I thought the only consent item was the minutes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll wait then. I'll lower my hand, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair of Nutter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams is absent.
Thank you. Public comment. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so. We do have one public comment. So far?
Yes. Michael Grubb, if you still want to speak for the general public comment, please raise your hand on Zoom. Any other members of the public on Zoom who want to speak general public, please raise your hand. And any members of the public who are in the audience, please give me a speaker slip. Just going to wait a few minutes. Chair of Nutter, it looks like we just have that one public commenter via Zoom.
Thank you.
The timer is going to be three minutes. Michael, you can go ahead and speak.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yes, my name is Michael Grubb and I live in San Mateo. I have a general comment, which is to urge the Planning Commission and the City Council to stop approving any new business developments that include office space. These are tenuous economic times with interest rates continuing to rise and banks are pulling back on lending and tightening their underwriting. Because of this, we already have at least two projects in San Mateo on two years' extensions, one of which is resulting in an ugly dirt lot in an already unattractive part of San Mateo. It appears we will be looking at that dirt for at least two years. In addition, there is a glut of office space up and down the peninsula, including vacancy rates exceeding 20% in both Redwood City and Menlo Park. There are numerous buildings for lease in San Mateo already. It makes no sense to continue to approve these projects with the above uncertainty and a supply of office space that already exceeds demand. Why would the Planning Commission or the City Council risk the city ending up with more vacant lots, stalled projects, half-completed projects, or those that run into financial problems? Who's going to fill these spaces and where will these people live? What we need in our already unattractive and fairly ugly downtown is more parks, flowers, trees, and median strips, and other amenities to improve the visibility and the attractiveness of San Mateo. Please be responsible. More development is not necessarily a good thing, and it is not a good thing right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair of Nutter, we have no more public commenters.
Okay, we will close the public comment period and open up our study session, item number two. Ashley, can you please read the introduction?
Yes. Item number two, pre-application review for a proposed office and residential mixed-use development at 668 East Third Avenue and 316 South Eldorado Street, Poston Bean.
Thank you. I would like to make a brief comment prior to the start of this item. Swinburne Builders may be part of this project team, and I retired from Swinburne two years ago. My financial situation cannot be affected by the performance of Swinburne Builders in any way. I am making this statement to address what some could incorrectly interpret as a conflict of interest. Secondly, Commissioner Williams is absent this evening dealing with the family issue, and she wanted to let the applicant know that she dearly wanted to be here, but it is impossible. Thank you. So, we will start with the staff presentation, followed by application presentation, clarifying questions from the commission, and public comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. If your comments have already been well represented by other public speakers, and you do not feel the need to reiterate the same item, the same issues, please choose to do so. The applicant may be also given five minutes at the end to respond to public comments. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission will deliberate and provide guidance to the applicant and staff. We will not be voting on this item this evening. It is a study session, and the project, if it moves forward, will come back to the Planning Commission for a formal hearing. Can we still, can we please have staff presentation, Lynda?
Thank you, Chair Eben Nutter and members of the Planning Commission. Lynda Lee, Associate Planner, presenting on Agenda Item Two, informational study session for 668 East Third Avenue, Poston Bean, Pre-Application. The project is located on two parcels bound by South Delaware Street, East Third Avenue, South Delaware Street, and a gas station. The downtown Caltrain station is located approximately 0.4 mile west of the project site. The combined parcel area is 0.9 acres or 42,643 square feet. The site has a general plan land use designation of downtown retail core support and is owned CBDs for central business district support. It is located in the downtown area plan Gateway Subarea. Existing uses on site include the shopping center, gateway crossing on the corner of East Third Avenue and South Delaware Street. There is also a three-story commercial medical office building on South Eldorado Street. The project site is surrounded by a variety of uses and zoning as shown here. There are other mixed-use developments and commercial uses to the west and south. This includes recently approved and pending projects such as Block 21, Block 20, and 435 East Third Avenue. Other pending projects include Fremont Terrace and Gateway Terrace to the north. There's also a mix of high and low-density residential uses in the north and east, such as the existing metropolitan apartments directly across on Eldorado Street. There are also single-family and duplex structures further north of the site. The project currently proposes to demolish all existing structures for a new mixed-use development that is approximately 192,000 square feet in size. The office building is located on the west parcel, and the residential building is on the east. The project proposes a six-story office building with a total floor area of 132,000 square feet. The building includes two levels of underground parking with up to 239 parking spaces for the office use. The residential building located on the east parcel consists of a seven-story tall building with 59 total units for rent. Of the units proposed, 14% or seven units are proposed affordable at the low-income level, and a fractional unit fee is proposed for the remaining 1%. The current unit mix includes 18 studios, 24-one-bedroom, and 17 two-bedroom units. The residential building ground floor includes a lobby area, bike room, and a parking garage, providing eight parking spaces. Both buildings propose driveway access from South Eldorado Street. Prior to the study session, the applicant held a virtual neighborhood meeting last month, attended by 20 community members. City staff have also received 17 public comment letters to date. A common issues and themes include a desire for a non-contemporary, more traditional architectural style with more visual interests, proposed uses and how it should retain neighborhoods serving commercial uses, a third, building height setbacks and size with a focus on improving transition to adjacent neighborhood, lastly, concerns for parking, traffic, and congestion that would be generated by the project, along with other pending developments downtown. Next, staff will cover applicable codes and policy. With respect to local codes, the project is zoned CBDs, which is consistent with the general plan land use designation of downtown retail core support. CBDs uses generally are meant to provide complementary uses to the downtown core and serve nearby residential neighborhoods. A summary of development standards are shown in this table on this slide. It should be noted that certain standards, such as floor area ratio, residential density, and building height, are proposed for modification under the state density bonus law. The project lies within the downtown area plan Gateway Subarea and includes the vision of the Gateway Design Guidelines. The downtown plan recommends convenience, retail, uses, and support service, as well as pedestrian realm improvements for increased connectivity to the downtown core. A minimum 15 feet building setback is also required for the residential building per the Gateway Design Standards. Additional policy documents include the pedestrian master plan and bicycle master plan. These documents provide guidance on ways to improve the public realm and recommends minimum sidewalk widths of 16 feet, which the project provides except along South Delaware Street. The zoning code also requires a minimum zero setback for the office building unless it is provided for provision of open space. The bicycle master plan also calls for a Class Four separated bike lane along East Third Avenue and South Delaware Street. For state law, it's important to note that the project is not subject to the Housing Accountability Act, since less than two-thirds of the mixed-use building floor area is proposed for housing. The project includes a state density bonus request with 14% of the residential base density at low-income category. This yields the project up to 26% density bonus, as well as opportunities to request one concession and various waivers listed here. This request is considered preliminary at this stage and may be modified further in the formal planning application. Lastly, the recent Assembly Bill 2097 prohibits the city from imposing parking requirements for this project since it is within one-half mile of major public transit. However, the applicant intends to provide parking of up to 239 spaces and a two-level underground garage for the office. The residential building also has eight parking spaces at the ground level. The applicant has indicated that additional spaces may be provided through a private shared parking agreement with the adjacent metropolitan building. This evening, staff requests that the commission provide feedback on the following discussion topics: proposed land uses, building design, site plan, and other aspects that the applicant should consider as they revise the project. For proposed uses, staff would like to highlight the zoning of the project site and surrounding area. As a mixed-use development proposing both office and residential, the project is consistent with zoning and land use. The project is also located on the border of the Gateway Subarea and functions as a transitional site between the Gateway residential neighborhoods to the west and north and to the commercial and downtown retail core to the east and south. However, given the number of public comments on the proposed office use, staff would like the commission's input on whether other uses should be considered, and if so, where. Shown here is the proposed seven-story office building, which has frontage along South Delaware Street, East Third Avenue, and South Delaware Street. The mix of office and residential use is similar to other recently approved mixed-use projects nearby, such as Block 21 and 435 East Third Avenue. Overall, there was a strong desire among the public to see more active uses and opportunities for neighborhood-serving commercial uses, such as small-scale retail, restaurants, and a grocery store. When discussing this item, the commission should consider all codes and policy documents. Although retail and other neighborhood commercial uses are not required, the downtown area plan encourages commercial uses that support surrounding residents, employees, and visitors within the gateway. This brings us to our first discussion questions. Should neighborhood-serving commercial uses be incorporated in the project, and if so, along which frontage or component of the proposed office building? Examples of neighborhood-serving uses could include retail, restaurants, schools, daycare, and markets. The next discussion item is building design. Staff would like the commission's feedback on areas that the project could improve related to overall building design and transition to adjacent uses. Currently, the project proposes a contemporary architectural style. This slide shows renderings of the six-story office building. And there's a mix of materials shown that includes cement, plaster, colored corrugated metal, and wood that help define the building base, body, and top. The residential building utilizes a different material palette consisting of brick, veneer, cement, plaster, and a neutral color palette. Wood siding is also proposed for portions of the residential building, whereas recessed or stepped back from the frontage. Overall, it has a similar building mass and style with the office building. With regards to public comments, staff did hear several requests for a less boxy design that's more traditional or respects existing architectural styles seen nearby. When discussing design, the commission should also consider neighborhood contexts. Since the project is located on the eastern edge of downtown within the gateway, there is a large mix of building styles and heights that surround this project site. For example, the adjacent Block 21 is approved at six stories, and the existing metropolitan is four to five stories tall. There are also one-to-two-story commercial and residential buildings nearby. The Gateway Design Guidelines also directs new multifamily projects to provide additional setbacks to further improve the building transition and create opportunities for open space at the ground level. At this time, the planning commission should provide feedback and consider the effect of the project in relation to the surrounding neighborhood. These are areas that staff would like the commission's feedback on. It includes the proposed contemporary architectural style and whether it is appropriate for the neighborhood, or should a different style be considered. Secondly, what further improvements should the applicant consider to improve the overall building height, mass, scale, and relationship with the surrounding context? The last discussion item relates to the proposed site plan and landscape treatments. Shown here are the proposed open space along all frontages of the project site. The applicant will provide greater detail of the improvements in their presentation. Within the gateway, the downtown area plan provides guidelines to enhance pedestrian and visual connection to the downtown core. The project currently proposes to improve the street frontage with new sidewalks, landscaping, and street trees along all the frontage, except for South Delaware Street. The city zoning code also requires a minimum of 1% aggregate open space for the proposed office and private open space for the residents. The project currently provides the minimum open space for the office, but not for the residential units. However, as mentioned earlier, the project anticipates reducing residential open space requirements through the state density bonus. The pedestrian master plan provides guidance to further enhance the pedestrian realm. This project is subject to mixed-use sidewalk standards shown here, which recommends a minimum 16-foot overall sidewalk width to accommodate a planter zone, pedestrian-through zone, and additional frontage. Currently, overall sidewalk widths are met for South Eldorado Street and East Third Avenue, but further refinements are needed to provide for the zones. Staff would like to note again that buildings in the CBDs zone have a zero building setback requirement, but up to 10 feet maybe allow for open space. In this case, the zoning code would supersede the pedestrian master plan for the office. The vision of the gateway also provides further design standards for the residential building along South Eldorado Street. This includes a minimum 15-foot building setback, along with eight feet setbacks on the upper floors. These additional setbacks, if provided, would create additional usable open space for the residents. The gateway also recommends street trees and pedestrian-scale lights to enhance pedestrian realm further. Again, the applicant has preliminarily requested to modify the open space requirements under the state density bonus law. For this topic, staff would like the commission's input on the following questions: what additional treatments should be considered to further improve the pedestrian realm of the project? Lastly, does the project accomplish the downtown area plan's goals to enhance the gateway connection to the downtown core? And if not, what changes should be considered? Lastly, the commission should also provide input on other project elements necessary to make positive findings during the formal planning application. These entitlements, the following entitlements are anticipated and include a site plan, an architecture review for the proposed building, a site development planning application for the proposed tree removal, and a special use permit to allow private shared parking. Following tonight's study session, the applicant will have an opportunity to revise the project based on input heard from the commission and the public, then submit a formal planning application. Environmental review, including technical studies, and a third-party design review will occur with a formal planning application. To summarize, staff would like the commission's input on these topics that relate to the proposed uses, building design, site plan, and landscape, and other project aspects. This concludes staff's presentation. Clarifying questions from the commission are welcome. The applicant is also available to present as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any clarifying questions for Lynda at this time?
So this is, I'm sorry I didn't get this to you in advance, but it's something that I was looking at on our GIS. But it looks to me that the street, the right-of-way widths are 70 feet for Delaware and Third Avenue. Is this something that staff could verify?
May it take me a minute to look this up if you would like that information?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, if you can verify that within a reasonable amount of time, yeah.
Any other clarifying questions at this point? Okay, so we can move on to the applicant presentation, please?
Through the chair. If you need time to find the right-of-way width, would it be okay if we let the applicant present and then maybe answer that after? Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Can you hear me okay? All right, there we go. I want to make sure the clicker is working too. Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you, planning commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Preston O'Connell. I'm with Harvest Properties. We're a locally-based organization that has a number of projects going on in San Mateo, and so we're really trying to get a hands-on approach. Many of our employees work and live in San Mateo, and so it's really important for us to get these projects right, where they really integrate with the local community. So, our Poston Bean project is a collaboration between ourselves and Prometheus, both of whom have a long-term commitment to the community and really view holding real estate long-term. And so we don't really aim to think about projects over how they function over five or 10 years, but really how they function over the next 50 to 100 and make sure they're successful over that period of time. successful over that period of time. So here's a brief map of some of the things that we're working on in the downtown. Obviously, we're here to talk about our Post and Beam project which is located on Third and Delaware. But we have a collection of projects that are in the downtown, and what we really aim to do is have them work collectively towards some of the community goals. And some of those that we've heard are creating more affordable and market-rate housing, helping achieve, activate the retail corridor along B Street, prioritizing the pedestrian experience, and really concentrating jobs around transit and the infrastructure that really supports it. So before we sit down to really think about any project, we try and do a lot of research and deep listening, and so we participated in the general plan workshops. We've read through the downtown specific plan. We've done a lot of formal and informal community outreach and really tried to distill it out into certain themes. We won't go through all of these, but some of the things that are a big focus for us right now is really focusing jobs on transit where the infrastructure really supports it. That's something, that's a concept that's really celebrated in what we've heard in the general plan workshops that have been going on, plus the existing general plan and the downtown specific plan. That makes sense for a lot of reasons because it really helps create vibrancy for the retail corridor and really helps support those small businesses. It also does some other thing else that's really helpful is the, as we're seeing a transition in the office space, it really allows for the office space that's starting to become more functionally obsolete that you really can't change to meet the dynamics of the workplace environment today. And it creates, you know, new office stock where folks that do need to be in the office and collaborate and innovate and get together allows for a more dynamic workplace for them to go to. And then the functionally obsolete product can be thought about as something new, something different, potentially housing, retail, and other things. And so we're really trying to bring in commercial into the downtown where it does make sense going forward. So the other things that we're really focused on is doing that in lockstep with the right amount of housing. And so we did a little bit of an introspective look, and if you look at the projects that Harvest has put forward in the last three to five years, we're proposing, you know, 440 units in the downtown and in the community. Some of those are under construction, some of those are being proposed. We've removed a lot of office space in that process, and so if you look at it on a net basis, we're adding about 80,000 feet of new office and retail. And the result of that is our, for our little mini portfolio of projects that we're putting forward or having under construction, we have a jobs-housing balance that really kind of falls in line with what we've heard in the general plan of some of the goals between 1.0 and 1.5. So let's talk specifically about Post and Beam. We did a lot of community outreach as part of this project. We're going to continue to do more. As Lynda pointed out, some of the things that we've heard and hear how we're planning to address them is our architecture. We've heard a wide array of different comments. We're flexible to change. I think there's a lot we can do in the material, in the detailing, to really address many of the community's comments that we've heard, and we're really open to your guidance and perspective. Parking is another topic that came up. I think what we're aiming to do is really park a transit-oriented commercial project in line with what we've seen other projects in the downtown do, which is roughly a 2.0 parking ratio per thousand for the office. And then on the residential, through our collective ownership of the Metropolitan Apartments and the onsite project, we're able to aggregate the parking and use that infrastructure more efficiently. So that the goal is really to make sure that the end conclusion, including a robust TDM plan, doesn't create any headaches in the neighborhood and that our project parking demand is really well-contained within the project. As pointed out earlier, one of the other things we heard is on retail. And we've given this a lot of thought, and we're trying to explore and do more research. I think one of the things that we're trying to do is see how successful retail would be in this location that doesn't rely, there's retail that's there today. We think it's heavily reliant on the surface parking lot that really surrounds it, which obviously would go away in a new development. You know, some of the other things that we're trying to take into consideration is all the vacancy in the downtown. And really making sure that, you know, for example, if there is retail that's brought in here, that it's successful long-term. It's not a dead zone. We've seen a lot of other projects, not necessarily in San Mateo, but just around, that people just throw in, you know, a token amount of retail on the ground plane, and it just sits vacant for multiple years, and that's not beneficial to anyone. So we want to be really thoughtful if we're doing, if we're trying to incorporate some type of retail use that's one that's successful long-term. I'll cover some of the pedestrian improvements. I know that was a question that the community provided, and we're going to get into that more in a moment. And then on traffic, one of the things that we learned as part of this process is a couple of years ago, we understand the city updated their kind of code requirements. We're looking at a more cumulative impact of traffic. And so as part of our sequascoping, that will be taken into consideration so the project's traffic is looked at more holistically. So getting into the project's vision a little bit, you know, what we tried to do is think about how this project transitions from the residential neighborhoods in the east as it kind of moves downtown and becomes a gateway into the more commercial districts. And really having that inform how we think about the scale as it moves across the block from Eldorado to Delaware. We also want to think about what were some of the historical uses of the site, which was in fact an industrial lumberyard. And so we thought mass timber would be a great opportunity here to have a building median that has warmer tones, that's more biophilic, more inviting, and we're trying to create something that's sustainable and durable long-term. So those were some of our guiding themes as we got into design. Looking at the design and site plan, as mentioned earlier, we really thought about, you know, creating that transition point from moving from the residential into the downtown and really increasing the pedestrian zones at the ground plane because that's what we feel like people truly experience when they walk past a project and having those spaces feel really usable and functional. And as you, as you walk around from Eldorado to Third to Delaware, you'll see that from the existing condition today to hopefully where we're headed, those spaces get, you know, two, three, even sometimes 400% larger. And really feel like that could be a great opportunity to integrate in with the neighborhood and have those spaces be more usable and more friendly. It also really helps kind of soften the edges of the building. And we'd love to get your input about how we could program those spaces effectively. So this, getting into the public realm for a moment, we thought really about the pedestrian first. How do we create gathering spaces, permanent planners, benches, people to have a little bit of respite? So today, what you have, for example, looking at the corner of Delaware and Third, is you really have about a seven, eight-foot sidewalk and really no landscaping that supports it. Where we're trying to take it to is the images you see on the bottom, which provide for 22 to 35 feet of open space. That really informs some of our building massing where we've really pushed those buildings back more to create that more generous space at the ground plane and really make it hopefully more welcoming and approachable for the community. This gives you some of those viewpoints as you walk around the project. So again, this is looking up and down our condition along Third. And then if you go around the block, this is extending towards Eldorado and Delaware. And so you can see those spaces get a lot more generous, a lot of landscaping up against the building, up against the street. One of the things that we're also thinking about is how do we make those streets more approachable as you cross them as a pedestrian? And so we're trying to put boltouts wherever we can to kind of narrow the street crossings to make those conditions more easier to cross and more friendly. And also supporting the master plan for the bike, the master bike plan that we know is out there and was mentioned earlier. These give you, this gives you a shot of some vignettes of what those spaces might look like, some great seating areas, gathering places, maybe some more mature landscaping. If you think that there's concepts that could be integrated here that we've missed, we would love some of that feedback. This is a shot of it right in the corner of Eldorado and Third, which is our more residential edge. And so we really try to push that building back, and you can see how the building steps both horizontally, and in a moment you'll see vertically, we're really trying to break up that massing as you move across the block and make it feel like a series of smaller buildings and create that more open-space plaza feel. So getting to the massing for a moment, as I mentioned earlier, we have this break on the Eldorado and Third side where we have a setback at the fourth floor, which is roughly 60 feet. That's in line with the Metropolitan that's to our east. And then as you move across that block into the downtown where the scale of the buildings that are already approved are moving up, for example, Block 21 and the Vicata Building, which are roughly 80 to 85 feet, the datum of our building would be very similar in nature. And so the goal was to really, to break down the scale on the residential side and then move that massing over to the other side so we could be thoughtful about that transition and in the process really break the planes of the building, both vertically and horizontally, and then bring some of that vegetation that you experienced at the ground plane and warmer elements up into the higher portions of the building. With the material palette that's warmer tones, that hopefully gives you opportunity to kind of see into the mass timber building and get those wood elements. This is image looking from Delaware and Third, very much a lot of the same themes. Again, the scale is a little bit higher here because we're up against a commercial building. One of the things that we had to deal with is a constraint, but we saw as an opportunity is we have a PGE transmission line that's on Delaware that runs the whole length of Delaware. So we have a one-story condition that we think helps kind of break the massing at the ground plane. We have the vegetated, elevated vegetation on the first floor there, and then we have a larger window portal kind of into the building to hopefully celebrate some of that mass timber that you would see at different times of the day. This is our Eldorado condition where we have the residential, really the front door to the residential, as well as you have the office that integrate together. We tried to create a strong base that feels very pedestrian, has more multiple tones of brick and concrete with a stucco kind of body and top to it, and break down the massing, create outdoor balcony opportunities for the renters there, have a wider street condition to make it feel, as I mentioned, more pedestrian where you'd want to bring your dog, relax, have great shade, have great lighting, feel safe, and have a mixture of uses that really kind of hopefully balance this block. Some of the things that you don't see here is we'll have an elevated rooftop deck, and then on the ground plane in the back, we'll actually have an amenity area that will include a raised garden area. So as you can appreciate, it's hard to cover every aspect of design and community comments in 10 to 15 minutes, so we'd welcome the opportunity to come back up and speak to any community comments or comments you may have as a planning commission that get raised. We're still early in our design, so we may not have all the answers. I think we're flexible on how we can move things around, and our design team is here to answer any technical questions or architecture questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, would the commission like to ask the applicant or staff clarifying questions and then move on to public comment?
The only question I had was, I already asked.
Through the chair, thank you. I have a few questions for staff. I was wondering if you could explain the density bonus calculation that results in this project being eligible for a 26% density bonus?
Sure, through the chair. So for the state density bonus law, the calculations are written in the state law itself, and so, and it's broken down by the category of the affordable housing units. So for low-income category, if you propose 14% of the base density, that would allow you up to 26% maximum density.
Great. So even though there is an in-loof fee for the fractional unit that would take it to 15%, the calculation for state law is on the built units?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Another question for staff. You mentioned in your presentation that the zoning code, which requires zero-foot setbacks or development to the property line, supersedes our pedestrian master plan. I assume, but wanted to confirm, that it also supersedes the vision for the gateway, which calls for 15 to 20-foot setbacks on these streets?
Sure, I can start, and Manera, if you want to jump in. So the gateway, I think we'd go with the most, it has the most restrictive standards, a 15-foot setback for the building, and this applies only to the residential. And so the zero-building setback applies to the office.
Got it.
I don't have anything for the...
Great, that answered my question. So there's actually two different requirements for the commercial and the residential, but, or there is a more restrictive requirement in the vision for the gateway for the residential, but the zoning code can supersede that?
In this case, the gateway would supersede the zoning code, but for the residential building only.
I see. Okay, great. Thank you. I was curious if you could share information on how the sidewalk widths proposed in this project compared to the design of the sidewalk widths and the street trees plan for Block 21, which is across the street, across Delaware Street?
I don't have the exact numbers at the top of my head. I can look for it, but for Block 21, it does propose a slightly wider sidewalk. I believe it was 13 and a half feet along the Delaware Street frontage. And then Block 21 also does propose street tree plantings.
Yes, thank you. So Block 21 is 13 and a half, and then this one, I'm looking at my notes, is 11 feet.
Correct.
Eight inches.
Yeah.
Just under two feet wider on the Block 21 side.
Yeah, and I also want to add, so the Block 21 sidewalk width, it's, it is not, it is not consistent with the pedestrian master plan, but it meets the zoning code.
Right, same situation.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you. I think those are all my questions for now.
Okay, thank you. A few questions for staff, and thank you for your presentation, Lynda, it was very clear. I understand that the FAR increase to 4.5 is only pertinent to the commercial portion of this project, correct?
So the FAR is 4.5 is combined for office and residential total.
If city staff deems it's appropriate to ascertain the validity of the bonus request, will an independent pro forma be used to establish clarity on this matter?
Through the chair, if I can respond to that, Manera, send the planning manager. Yes, the city would have to determine. The burden of proof would lie on the city whether or not the concession offsets the cost of the affordable units. The applicant, of course, we worked with the applicant initially to get justification, but if staff has concerns, we may do an independent analysis.
Thank you. Can staff include in any further traffic studies actual driveway counts so a clear understanding of existing traffic patterns are captured? And as a sidebar, any queuing that may occur now and how it could impact revised traffic flow in the future?
Through the chair, well, to the chair in this instance. Yes, that is something that staff will be considering as part of the scoping for the SEQA analysis. The SEQA analysis will look at operational impacts that result from the project in addition to VMT impacts, and then we'll also be looking at queuing and safety analysis if there is concerns based on the number of trips that are generated from this project. We haven't yet completed the scoping. That typically occurs at the formal application stage, but we would be happy to include that recommendation to our traffic consultant and determine if it's appropriate in this case.
Thank you. Lynda, part of your presentation, I think, stated that the, if it was fully residential or residential could only be built on this property if it was part of a mixed-use development?
May I just chime in for a second? Chair Abner, you're a little hard to hear, so if you could...
Oh, sorry about that.
...come a little closer to the microphone. Thank you.
So I think part of the presentation was that residential would only be allowed on this, on this site if it was part of a mixed-use, mixed-use development?
Correct, that's written in the zoning code.
So what defines a mixed-use development?
So it could be residential combined with office, commercial. Essentially, residential cannot be proposed on its own.
So office, I'm sorry, residential and retail would apply?
That would be allowed.
Okay. And if an applicant had a property of this size and this location, would that requirement be waived if they wanted to use it as a bonus from the state, the state bonus law?
Could you repeat that question, please?
If a site of this condition in this neighborhood were proposed to be fully residential, could the state bonus law reduce the city's, remove the city's requirement for mixed use?
We would have to evaluate that, Chair Abner, because that may be inconsistent with the general plan, but it's not an objective standard. But we would have to evaluate that, and that's not the project on the table at the moment.
Correct, just curious. So one last question. I think I noticed somewhere in the report that there was, and I think on the presentation, there was ceiling heights of roughly 15 feet in a couple of areas, and those needed to be calculated double the size of that floor area. Is that true?
Correct. That was in the pre-application comment letter.
Okay. And so that size has been incorporated, that additional foot has been incorporated in the overall square foot?
Yes, that would be calculated. Yes, that would be calculated within it twice.
Perfect. Those are my only questions for now. Thank you. Should we go to public comment or more questions?
Through the chair, I have one more question. There was mention of a power transmission line on Delaware Street. Does the existence of power lines preclude street trees?
No, the existing power lines do not preclude. The city's street tree master plan has recommendations for tree types when located near power lines.
Great, thank you.
Also, through the chair, were you able to ascertain what the street width is?
Commissioner Nugent, would you remind me which street you were looking for?
Either or both, yeah.
So this is based on a rough takeoff of a survey that the applicant provided. But for Third Avenue, it's roughly 48 feet wide if you measure from the edge of the curb to the other edge of the curb.
I'm asking from property to property, so the right-of-way width.
Oh, including the sidewalk width?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, it looks like the applicant might be able to answer that question.
It's 70.
70, okay, thank you.
On Third.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to repeat what the applicant had said. So 70 feet right-of-way width.
Okay, that's what I thought it was based on my research. Thank you.
Okay, so we can go to public comment. Ashley, can you tell me how many people we have online and in person?
Chair Abner, we currently have eight public commentators in person and two over Zoom. If anybody else wants to fill out a comment slip and give it to me in person, please do that now. And anybody else who wants to comment on Zoom, please raise your hand now. I'm just going to give it a moment. Chair Abner, it looks that we have 12 public comments in total, so each public commenter will get two minutes each. We're going to start with the public commentators in person. So Diana Pettit, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Diana Pettit, and I currently live at 221 South Fremont Street in San Mateo. My condo faces Third Avenue. And when I leave my condo, I'm on South Fremont Street. I've lived there 15 years, and it is first-time homeowner's property. I did not get to go to the other two community meetings. I could have gone to the one at the library, but I was not able to do that since I do help take care of my granddaughter. I want to say that I'm glad that I came tonight. The building with the wood look through the windows is very impressive. But I do have a small problem, and that is the heights. I realize that across the street, Block 21 will be the higher height. But we're across the street at Delaware, and there is residential across the street for HEMIS, which is very similar to what I live in, which is a regular condo approximately somewheres between 20 and 30 years old. And across the street diagonally from the property on Third and South Eldorado is a 100-year-old building. It used to be a dentistry. And the daughters of that dentist still live there. They do try to keep it up. They rent it out by three tenants. And I think it's very important that we keep that type of situation going, because there's other homes down on Eldorado where young people have purchased. What I want, I guess my time is over. Thank you for your time. You have my letter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair Abner, our next in-person speaker is Karen Suho. Karen can come up to the microphone.
Hello, good evening. My name is Karen Suho, and I'm a resident of San Mateo. I live at 50 North San Mateo Drive. It's my first meeting ever. I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to see progress happen in our fair city of San Mateo in many ways. I've lived here, and I've loved this town. I love all the aspects of what makes San Mateo special. I chose San Mateo especially for the feel that it is like a small town in many ways, and yet we have so much to offer, so much diversity. What I am feeling, though, is with all this new progress of the development, the site over by Traggs, where Traggs used to be, that's come up, and now these sites over there off Third Avenue and the proposed site, is this this feeling in general of sort of a loss of its charm? And I understand that, you know, we need housing and we need development. But in my opinion, I do feel that there is quite a bit, maybe too much, of the office space. As someone who works for a very large corporation, we're having a hard time bringing people back, and I tend to think, well, part of the problem is the housing issue. And I'm just not certain that these buildings, with all their good intention, and everyone has a different share of the pie, really has the intention of helping residents to find suitable housing. And just looking at the proposals, as far as like the residence, what was it, 59 units and then only eight parking spaces? It's kind of like if you go to Costco at Christmas time, there's never a lot of parking, and that just starts out in a somewhat of a negative feel. I'm being candid about it, but I think you understand where I'm coming from. That spills over into the general parking problems that we already have that plague downtown San Mateo. So I'm hoping that we can come to some reasonable solutions and take these things into consideration of how best to serve our community, because it is very special, and I hope it retains that special feeling as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Abner, our next in-person speaker is Maureen Killough. Maureen, you can come up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Maureen Killough, and I live and work near downtown San Mateo on Fourth Avenue between Fremont and Grant. And I walk, I bike ride and drive to downtown almost daily for errands, shopping and enjoying the park. And I'm concerned about the architecture and the look of this proposed building. It would be great to incorporate like a Spanish-style look or an Art Deco or like a window shape like the beautiful building on the corner of B and Second where Blue Bottle Coffee is. If we could do something in that style, it would really go along with more charm. And we're at the stage now where we can encourage the developers to consider a more aesthetic look that would be attractive for our downtown. The glass box architecture just seems incongruent to me, and it isn't anything special or appealing to look at, given how tall and big this building is going to be. It's going to make a big impression when people are driving in, and we have the chance now to make that impression a more attractive one. I'm also confused on why we are allowing such high buildings, which exceed the Measure Y limits. And I also wonder what is going to happen with all this available office space when these projects are finished? It would be awful for our downtown to have an oversupply of office space. Right now, we need more residential housing, but are we really sure there is the demand for over 1 million square feet of office space in our downtown? So I hope that you're all looking at this. And I'm blown away also at how little parking is being provided or required. And the answer seems to be that all these workers will take public transportation, but are we 100% sure of that? I'm not confident of this, and I hope we are not creating a situation where our downtown will have gridlock and no parking spaces. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Chair Abner, our next two speakers are Ben Chan and Judith Patton. Ben, you can come up to the microphone.
My name is Ben Chan. I live high up for the front building. I am here to fight for our life. I'm here to fight for our kids. I'm here to fight for an earthquake break. You know, you see in Turkey, there's 50,000 people die, the graveyard, you can see. So just like the Al Qa'ghor, right? You can increase the risk of the car accident. The high-rise building just increase the light of downed residential. This is just a fact. Also, this deal get the worst for our future generation, right? The older the building, the older the building, the more danger to our kids are. Please protect them. They are our future, right? You might have killed an iceberg star. So I'm just asking, this is a lion's test decision for you. Our kids' price in your hand, right? So you are deciding could last for 100 years or 200 years. So please fight for our kids. Please don't wait a high, don't wait a high, 55. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Judith Patton and Michelle Fernandez. Judith, can come to the microphone?
I'm Judith Patton. I live on South Eldorado between Fifth and Seventh, so I have a great interest in this building. Luckily, a lot of what I was thinking has been said. I do worry that we have too much office space and that we have sacrificed interesting little smaller businesses for these big glassed-in things, which may or may not be filled. I definitely think that as the gateway to our city coming in on Third from the freeway, that although it looks good from the sidewalk drawings, when you look at it from a car driving in, it's a very bleak-looking design. And I do hope that we will institute some kind of architectural control for this downtown area so that we do take one of those prettier styles. My biggest concern is that I keep hearing that we're pressed by the state that if we don't get enough lower-income housing, we are going to then, that will sort of supersede our height limitations and force us to build even larger buildings. So I just think it's unreasonable to only have, in this building, for one example, seven below-market-rate units. And I would like to see, we have something the developers want. It's an attractive city, it's a good place to build, and I think we should press them or encourage them to produce more lower-income units than are planned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Michelle Fernandez and Lori Watanuki. Michelle, can come up to the microphone?
My name is Michelle Fernandez. I live on Fourth Avenue. I moved into the area in 2009, mainly due to the historical look and feel of the area and the buildings and the walkability of being able to get into downtown very easily. Recently, over the last few years, I've noticed that designers of new and planned buildings do not take into account the historical design and does not reflect the residents' feedback, which is very, very unfortunate. I completely agree with all the previous speakers, so I won't belabor the point, but the one point that I did want to bring to your attention is that I noticed that the gas and stop is not part of the plot and the planning right now. I would strongly suggest that you include the gas and stop to be included in this project, whatever it ends up looking like. Safety and availability of space for the design was mentioned over a number of points by the previous speakers. The safety, hygiene, and aesthetics of the gas and stop causes great concern during the day. It's filled with a lot of day laborers. During the evening, they've been drinking, so they're drunk day laborers. Also, there's gas station fried chicken, but we won't touch that right now. I would strongly request that you guys consider adding the gas and stop to this whole design plot as we move forward and really look and consider the residents' requests to lower the height of the building. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Abner, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki. LoopNet lists 560,000 square feet of vacant office space in the downtown, and the HCD is not mandating more office space but more housing. So why not build a housing project versus more office space? We need townhomes and condos for young families who cannot afford a single-family home. Sarah's Regis built townhomes at Third, Fourth, and South Humboldt. We need more stability in this area and walkability to support our downtown. We'd like to see a traditional architectural design to better transition for the smaller single-family homes and for the metropolitan apartments. This project looks massive. It looks dense. It's too tall at 88 feet and 84 feet and exceeds Measure Y. Downtown San Carlos has Wheeler Plaza and Tressel Apartments near the historic train station. They both have modern Spanish Revival architectural elements, and I believe both were built by Prometheus, the same developer who's developing this project with Harvest Properties. It is important to have design compatibility and contextual continuity to our historical downtown. The 7,000 square feet of open space is required, and only 2,500 is being offered, and we think this is insufficient. We need more open space between the buildings and green landscaping with the public plaza, with the fountain. We need an EIR to analyze the cumulative traffic, parking, and construction impacts with more dust, diesel soot, truck, construction noise, and vibration impacts to nearby homes and residents. We need to measure the cumulative impacts of all these construction projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last in-person speaker is Linda Simmensen. Linda, can come up to the microphone?
Hello. Nice to see you all tonight. Thank you. My name is Linda Simmensen. I've lived and worked in San Mateo for the last 30 years, and my husband's lived here for 50 years. And we currently live at Seventh and South Humboldt, so we are a few blocks away. And I also daily walk into downtown and also was drawn to the charm and beauty of this community. I agree with what many of the prior speakers have said. I won't reiterate too much of that, but I do think overall, that just as an overall statement, I think that it is a very large building. I understand that developers are here to make money, that the large, getting the absolute maximum density and size and the largest square feet by a block building is the most profitable. I understand that that is the model. But I also think as the Planning Commission, as people that are representing the needs and the desires of people of this community, I think there has to be some balance between profit and quality of life and fit. I also am concerned that the paradigm of office space and development has changed dramatically in the last few years. And I think this is something, there's two projects that have now put on hold for two years, one leaving a huge blight right in the middle of the community. The trees are already destroyed, there's fencing around, they have a two-year delay. I'm concerned that with increasing interest rates, the changing, the uncertainty economically, and the difficulties getting people back into the offices is going to cause a real problem. I'm also concerned that the balance between housing and office space is not going to be saved, but is going to be exacerbated by adding so many people taking the train down here, and then we have less proportional housing. I think that the balance between housing and office, I know you're trying to be balanced as well as you can, but I think overall in the city, that's a huge problem. And adding maybe eight or nine affordable units and 59 studios and one-bedrooms is not housing for a lot of people. And there won't be a lot of people using retail and restaurants if we have... if we have so many new people living in the downtown area and if they have no place to park. It's a negative impact on the community. So just thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members in the audience would like to speak? Thank you.
Chair Abner, we're going to move on to our Zoom commenters. Our first commenter is going to be Olya, and our next commenter is going to be David Light. Olya, can you go ahead and unmute?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Olya, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, fantastic. So I would like to say that I spoke to my neighbors. Nobody said that they liked this project. This is just another huge building that will ruin the charm of San Mateo, unfortunately. The developer showed us some other projects which are much shorter in height, and this one honestly looks like a prison. My suggestion will be that the developer has to acquire the gas station. It will be an ice storm. It will be a really, really unpleasant situation to leave it there. What else? Parking is ridiculous. Our street parking is a problem as is. Retail must be required, not allowed for the developer. First, they will build the most expensive retail. Say that nobody wants to rent it. But they have to do something for this community. You have to accommodate the retail. Otherwise, there will be food trucks parked in front of your beautiful new building. Only you think that this is beautiful. I really think that it's ugly, and you have to do something about it. We already have many, many food trucks which are just showing up on any street, and it has a very bad feeling. We're losing the charm of San Mateo. This is not how this town used to be. And this Planning Commission should do something about it. You guys are responsible. You really have to think what you are doing with this city. You cannot all retire in Hawaii. This will not work. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker via Zoom is David Light. And our speaker after that is Thomas Morgan. David Light, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi. My name's David Light. I've lived at 614 South Fremont Street since 1985. And I was happy to hear the representative from Harvest Property refer to this as a gateway building. It certainly is a gateway to our historic downtown San Mateo. And people have mentioned the charm and the elements, I think, that people remember from downtown San Mateo or the Spanish Revival, the Mediterranean kind of look. And this building certainly doesn't fit in. It would look better with the modern buildings in the Bay Meadows projects, but it just doesn't complement the historic downtown. And I started thinking, why would this be? And I remember at the end of the last planning meeting, Chair Abner raised a question. Do we need to talk about design guidelines, architectural design guidelines? And he was told by staff that there was no time to do that. They couldn't even begin to discuss that until next year. And so this made me very nervous, thinking, gosh, are these projects being approved before there's an agreement on design guidelines and particularly distinguishing our historic downtown San Mateo as other cities like San Carlos and Redwood City have done from other places like Bay Meadows, other places in San Mateo like Bay Meadows, which have much more modern buildings? And so I'm a little bit concerned about the lack of design guidelines and that this building needs to more fit into our historic downtown San Mateo. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Thomas Morgan and George. Thomas, can you go ahead and unmute?
Good evening, Chair Abner and Commission. I'm speaking on my own behalf this evening. I share a lot of the sentiments about the need for more housing in this location. I hear a lot about office conversions to housing. So floor plates this large just do not make sense should the office not work. 14-foot floor plates or some 15 feet in some area is also way too much. I think in about the same amount of space, you could, while it might not be allowed, you could probably almost get nine stories of housing in the same footprint. And I also agree with the comments about acquiring the gas station. I think it's a little disrespectful to ask people to live next to the gas station and give the perhaps better location to the office. I think the penthouse is just way too large and needs to be, I think the windows overall need to be made smaller. And I think that is part of the problem with the large floor plates is because they're so large, you need the large windows to make it a place where you would want to be. So find ways to break it up. I would also like to see power features and some eaves on this building. It just adds more character to the building and just something more traditional in the style that benefits the neighborhood. Thank you.
Our next speaker is George, and our speaker after is Amy W. George, you can go ahead and unmute. George, you can go ahead and unmute if you haven't already.
Can we come back to him, Ashley, and go on to the next speaker?
Yeah. Our next speaker is Amy W., and our speaker after is going to be Nico Nagle. Amy, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hello. Are you able to hear me?
It's kind of hard to hear you. Can you speak a little bit clearer into the microphone?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, we'll hear better.
Okay. I am actually standing at the corner of Clermont and 3rd, staring at the empty lot that the two-year delay has been on. I really don't want to see that adjacent to it, the next corner, which is at 3rd and Delaware. I actually live on Eldorado between 2nd and 3rd. And our family has a lot of concerns about the project going on around here because we have an unfinished project at 2nd and Fremont, a giant mountain of dirt at 3rd and Fremont. As I mentioned, this dirt lot now between Delaware and Clermont on 3rd and this proposal for a giant, what looks to be like a warehouse, very square, what's been deemed a modern building, but it has very little character from the outside. The developer has mentioned lots of components on the interior that pertain to the history of the city, but not from the outside. I also have concerns about the lack of retail being offered. When the Block 21 came up, they took out quite a few small businesses, businesses of color, businesses that hired people of color. Similar is going to happen when Post and Bean comes up. It's eliminating small businesses, family businesses, businesses that have been there for many, many years to serve our community. And this whole area is being redeveloped, and we are losing a lot of retail and businesses that people in my neighborhood need. People who are lower income, working class, they need somewhere to get a nice, cheap meal that's hot to bring home to their family. I just want the Commission to think about what we are losing for the sake of offices and for housing. That instead of offices, let's think more about retail. So those are my thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nico Nagle. Nico, you can go ahead and unmute. And our speaker after is going to be Ben Tai.
Good evening, City Council. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name's Nico Nagle. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. We are a 20-year-old pro-housing nonprofit, almost 25-year-old pro-housing nonprofit. We support new homes at all levels of affordability. We have not reviewed specifically this project tonight, although we intend to in the future. So I can't speak too specifics. But what I will say is there's tremendous importance in creating new homes across the Bay Area. The context that really all housing is to be considered in is that of a housing shortage that is driving an affordability crisis. And so new homes are tremendously important. And organizationally, we throw our support behind new homes. Like I said, we have not reviewed the project. We intend to. We intend to come back with more specific comments. But tonight, delivering a message of support of new homes. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ben Tai. Ben, you can go ahead and unmute. And our speaker after that is George.
Hello, Planning Commission. Yeah, my name's Ben Tai. I live on Eldorado between 2nd and 3rd. A lot of great points have been said tonight. I agree with many of them. I do want to further reiterate the lack of, or the elimination of retail across the street. There are first-generation, second-generation, small business, first and second-generation American small businesses there that are being displaced right now because of their rents being skyrocketed by the developer. And I think the excuse of lack of parking being a deterrent for retail can easily be addressed by adding dedicated parking in their parking structure. And I agree on a lot of the comments today, but I would say that I don't see a need for architecture that, let's say, is a facsimile or recreation of some type of other design. I feel that as long as it is an original design that has character, that is okay for the neighborhood. But a big box is not okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That will make Amy's joke key.
We have two speakers on Zoom under the name George. I think it might be the same person. So I'm just going to unmute both of them. So George, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. We had some technical difficulties, as you properly surmised. So there was a discussion at the neighborhood meeting regarding coordinating with Samtrans to move the current bus stop at 2nd and Delaware to Delaware along the frontage of this building because this is, quote, "a transit-oriented building", and it would be convenient for people to step out and catch the bus right to the airport. And also, the 292 bus, when it was rerouted from downtown to Delaware, they picked up the school bus stop at 2nd and Delaware, which has about a four-foot-wide sidewalk. Not a pleasant situation currently. Will be untenable once this new bus traffic appears, assuming these people are going to take the bus. I think that's everyone's hope. That's one. Two, I think it's a good idea for buildings of this nature to provide services that are easy to provide, such as there probably should be an Amazon locker in the publicly accessible Amazon locker in the lobby of this building that can cut down on the number of van trips and deliveries in the neighborhood and save gas and save energy and all the good things that happen when you try to be green. So I agree with the people who think this building is just flat-out wrong for the area. I mean, it's an institutional look. I think it would look great as a 1950s mental health complex. I guess it matches with what we have over at Cuckoo Crossing now, right? People refer locally as the prison yard. So now we're going to have Creedmoor in the prison yard, right next to each other. It's got to do something about the exterior of this building. It's a box. It's made to maximize profits for the developers. Nothing more. Nobody's even fooled by anything going on with that. I know there's a bunch of other comments, but I will just say I have agreed with what people have said. I would say that the arguments about green space and open space are very important. That gas station, maybe it should be apart. Maybe this project shouldn't go forward unless it's apart. This Commission prides itself on being progressive and green. And yet, if you look at the buildings that have gone up, we've lost more than half the trees, and we've lost all the open space.
Thank you, George.
All words, no action.
Thank you.
Chair Abner, we don't have any more public commenters.
In that case, we will close the public comment period. Thank you for everyone for participating. And would staff like to address a couple of questions? I have the gas station being part of the application or part of the proposal and the design guideline timeline. And I don't know if there's anything else that staff might want to address.
You want me to take it? All right. The comments regarding the gas station, I understand that the community has a desire to see that be a part of the project. However, it's really up to the applicant to acquire that piece of property and propose that as part of the project. The city cannot require the applicant to do it. I think the city can provide feedback and suggest that they explore that idea. However, that's not something that we would require and would preclude the processing of the current project. The second question...
The timeline on the design guidelines?
Yes. So we are currently working on objective design standards that are citywide and also for the vision of the gateway to incorporate the objective standards that currently exist there. These are anticipated to be published very soon, probably this week, for public review. We will be having a Planning Commission study session soon, and the staff's objective is to have these in place by the end of the year based on Commission recommendation and council approval.
Thank you very much. If the applicant would like, you've got five minutes to respond to the public comments.
Thank you, Planning Commission and the community for providing those comments. I think some of those comments will probably naturally be addressed tonight in having a discussion on the architecture. I know that's probably where we're headed. I think, as I mentioned in my presentation, I think we're open to moving the architecture to a style that if folks feel it could better integrate with the community, I think we're open to that conversation and trying to make those modifications where we can. I know one of the things that was brought up was around parking. And so I think one of the things that may not have come through as clearly as it could in our application is we are providing eight stalls within the building, but in order to maximize the residential footprint, give as many units as possible out there, and also use infrastructure, parking infrastructure that's underutilized right now. We have 60 to 70 stalls across the street that aren't being used that can provide more than adequate parking for the residential, including the eight onsite units. So I just want to reiterate again that that's not a new concept, that there's a lot of roadmaps there to do that successfully and it's something that we'll work with staff on. I think, again, we're open to having the conversation on retail. We just want to make sure that it's successful. And so if there's an area where we can do that and the folks that we work with, that are retail specialists, they're in the market, they understand what the tenant demand is, who would go there and be successful. Again, we're open to having that conversation and collaboration with staff to see how big of a footprint that should be, what would make it work. For example, it's that vacant for multiple years. Is there a way to potentially repurpose? to, you know, potentially repurpose that space, you know, that, seeing how it could work successfully and also in work overall in the development program. I think on, there was a question, a few questions on open space. I think our commercial is going well beyond the minimum requirements. I think in the residential, I think there are areas to potentially make things like the deck more usable to count under the city's requirements. You know, there's almost 1,500, 2,000 square feet of deck that's actually not being included towards the minimum requirement that is there. There's also maybe areas that, at the ground plan, we could better utilize for open space. So we'll take a look at that after we come back and see if there's a way to increase the open space areas that are being offered to the residential. I think that's... Yeah, I think on the gas station, we've had conversations with the ownership. They don't want to sell it. We can't force them to sell it. There's nothing we can do. But we've tried. We tried very hard. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a 10-minute break. Thank you.
...
I'd love to have a time mark. The one you have your fingers on.
My fingers?
Thank you.
...
Mike, I think I knew this. She first moved into her apartment, she took a picture, later the right, target right next to each other. She said the picture, she says, "Genius," you know?
Okay, we will resume the meeting, and at this time, it is the time for the commission to deliberate and provide guidance to the applicant and staff. Does anybody have any questions that they want to ask the applicant prior to our recommendations? Or would you like to start by going through the list of discussion points, and then, if we need to further ask the applicant questions, we will?
Through the chair. I'm wondering if you'd like us to sort of each run through all the comments, or tackle it topic by topic?
Can I see the list, please?
May I just interject in this? I find it, personally for me, easier to comprehend the conversation if we go topic by topic, as if we start...
I think this list lends itself to that.
Yep.
So, great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything for you, Martin.
You're too kind.
Would you like, but that means you get to start.
I'm blushing. I thank you. I will start, and I think, given some of the topics, I also agree that I think trying to go item by item hopefully lends itself to a more coherent discussion and more clarity for staff and the applicant. So, thanks to the staff, excellent presentation. For members of the community who may or may not still be listening, thank you all for your input, comments, and participation. It's incredibly helpful to us, so thank you for all of that. And in the interest of transparency, I'll just disclose that I'm professionally acquainted with members of the applicant's team. That's not going to have any impact on my analysis of the project. I'll remain unbiased and neutral. And lastly, I mentioned that I've met with the applicant, and I've also visited the sites several times, sorry, the sites several times, including this morning with a tape measure, checking the sidewalk with. So, okay, having settled that, proposed uses. There is some, there's some language in the staff report just asking us to reference city adopted plans and policies when we make some of these comments, and so, in this case, I'm going to try to do that. The land uses of office and retail, to me, this is the drier part. When we get to the other topics, I have a lot more to say, but the land uses, to me, are consistent. The CBD support zoning specifically calls out commercial and residential uses, so here we are. I think that's clear as a land use for me. I do see an opportunity looking at Land Use Policy 2.8 in the general plan regarding preserving retail, and also the definition of the CBD support zone in 2739, zoning code 2739, to incorporate some retail or restaurants that would primarily serve the adjacent residential neighborhoods. I didn't see a lot in the adopted plans and policies that would offer strong or objective guidance on where it would go, but I know that's a question from staff. I thought about this, and I'll talk more about retail later on, kind of under the guise of site plan and activation, but just to look at where a land use would go on this block, to me, I considered sort of the corner of Third and Delaware as being the busiest corner. Maybe that's the location, or if you go more Third and Eldorado, then you're appealing more to the neighborhood. Looking at the way the building is massed today, and the practical nature of Delaware being kind of loud and fast, and the idea that that retail usage should, I think, preference the neighborhood versus downtown, and I'm just looking at, again, the language in 2739 about neighborhood serving, to me, the location for retail would be on Third, kind of activating the plaza that the applicant has proposed over there. So, I'll circle back more to the idea of the retail, but under land uses, those were my only comments, and I'll pass it on to the next commissioner.
Figure we'll just go in order of seating. So, before I get into my comments on proposed uses, I want to thank staff for a great and informative presentation and packet. It was really helpful. I was able to sink my teeth into it and understand quite a bit. I also want to thank public commenters for taking the time and putting themselves out there to express their thoughts to us. It's appreciated. For disclosure, I also met with the developer last week. They provided me basically the presentation that they gave tonight, and I don't have any affiliation with them. I do live nearby. I live about five blocks away, and I often go by the site to get to downtown, and I often use the businesses that are currently located there. I want to talk about proposed uses. Residential makes up less than 30% of the square footage of this project, based on the project data sheet, but the proposed 59 units are at the maximum of what our current general plan of 50 units per acre plus the state density bonus law allow. So, basically, using our local zoning, even with state density bonus law, leaves a large, a massive amount of space that developers are going to want to use after that sum. And unfortunately, they will use office right now in order to maximize their investment, and I think that this needs to be fixed in our general plan update. That being said, and this is, I want to talk to the developers specifically, I want to highly, highly recommend using AB 2011. It is now state law instead of the city's current general plan and zoning code. Use of this law provides ministerial approval to you, so there's no question what you can do. do. However, it must be a residential-only project. Most residents, as you've heard, recognize the need for more housing in San Mateo. And to many of them, additional office space appears far more dubious, even if this mixed-use route might satisfy our current general plan. If you used AB 2011, it allows 80 units per acre base density, and then with density bonus law, that would increase to about 100 units for this site. AB 2011 also allows 65-foot base height. And given the 100 units this could, that it could provide, you probably would not need to exceed this height. Now, it is your option what you want to use, but I want to strongly encourage you to explore AB 2011 for this site. The right-of-way widths are, make this applicable. So, if you choose not to go the AB 2011, I do want to strongly encourage you to consider retail. Again, I use the site often. I will walk there, and there's a lot of people there that drive. That parking lot is a snarl, so if you do try to park there, you often won't be able to. Now, that says something, that's like information, in that a lot of people that use that site for retail are driving. However, many of the people that are quite close are not. And so, you know, if it works out and if it's feasible, I think that that would activate the corner quite a bit. It doesn't have to be the extent that's currently there, the number of businesses, but if it is possible. Otherwise, something like a daycare, which is also extremely needed, or something along the frontage that would provide, you know, energy and activation at the pedestrian level would be really nice. And I think that our general plan is currently is what that's encouraging as far as why this is a mixed-use type of parcel, is it's trying to get stuff going on at the ground floor level to make this a walkable place. That being said, I also understand that America as a whole has a glut of retail space. And so, it's important that we don't have a dead zone. So, I don't have, I don't have a crystal ball that can see what kind of retail would work, but if it does, please include it. And I also agree with Commissioner Wiggins that the corner of Third and Delaware is probably the most active as far as people coming and going on that site. Those are my comments on usage.
Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, through the chair. Also, I want to thank everybody for providing public comments. It's very helpful to hear how our community feels about a project as well. I want to thank Commissioner Nugent for bringing up AB 2011. I don't know how that slipped my mind when I was reviewing the project, perhaps because it went into effect on July 1st. So, it's a very fresh law, and I think that that is an interesting opportunity to consider. It would, I think, incorporate a lot of the sentiment you've heard from the community about a preference for retail at this, or preference for housing at the site. I agree with some of the other comments from the community members and from my fellow commissioners that I think retail would be great at this site if it can be incorporated. I live in an adjacent neighborhood. I frequent those retail businesses quite often when I need a fast meal to throw on the table. I've also noted parking there is always full, which again is a data point, so I walk there when I need to grab takeout. And especially when you talk about the number of employees that are going to be in that office and the adjacent apartments, I think retail uses like restaurants, corner store, the 7-Eleven is very convenient when you need a gallon of milk. Those sorts of neighborhood-supporting uses, I think, would really benefit the community. That's all I've got? Oh, sorry. I'll add one more thing, which is, thinking about where on the site to incorporate retail, Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue are quite busy. You have three lanes going in one direction. And I find, when I'm walking around there, I tend to avoid walking along Third and walking along Fourth because it just, I'm sure it is safe, but it feels a little like, ooh, you know, it's noisy, cars are moving faster than they should be. And so, for that reason, I wonder if Eldorado or Delaware is, Commissioner Nugent is shaking his head, I wonder if those two might be better because they feel a little bit more like streets where people would stop and linger, as opposed to when you're on Third and Fourth, you're like, oh, this is busy, let me just get to where I'm going and not pause and linger.
Yeah, I'll respond to that. I think, again, it depends on what kind of retail, but it would be completely hidden on Eldorado. People would not see it. And any sort of retail establishment is going to want to be very visible, and that is the most visible.
And maybe biased by my own use, which is I always walk down Eldorado and go in through the back when I'm hitting those businesses to avoid the parking lot, to avoid the busy streets.
Through the chair, just to build on this one for a moment. So, while Third and Delaware, I don't know if I spoke clearly, Third and Delaware is maybe the busiest spot. You see, I think of Third and Delaware as you see it while you're moving and whoops, I'm gone and I can't get back there. And I agree that Third and Fourth are also busy. When I was kind of zooming out and looking at it and trying to think about the concept of gateway, it was notable to me that retail historically has kind of glommed on to Third or Fourth. So, I'm just thinking, if there's a logic there, for whatever reason, that's where the retail has gone. And even on our dearly departed Block 21, the retail was on Third. And things that were less, that drew less either foot traffic or just people in and out the door were kind of one of the other frontages. And Fourth, I know Fourth was an auto shop there. So, I was leaning towards Third, not really on Delaware. And just for clarity, I'm not, I don't want to convince anyone, I don't know if people agree, but I was looking at the plaza that has almost, I don't know if it's a plaza is the right word, but the step back on the red mass of the building, which I will soon talk about. That interior square footage, it's kind of sets itself up to be demised separately. People may have noticed that. And I'm, you know, I don't live in that neighborhood. I come down there a lot. I bike to, bike to Ike's, I bike to Onnagale. I use some of the stuff there. And I never try to drive into that parking lot unless I want to make it take a long time. So, but I'm looking at the neighborhood, I come down Third a lot. I'm looking at people that walk their dogs or what the people that live in the metropolitan are doing. And my sense is, is today, you don't want to walk around the block where the shopping center is. You kind of just have to keep, it's like, it's a dead end. And I'm looking at, if you create an atmosphere on Third that people actually want to be in, then, and I agree Third's not great to walk down, but people still do it, you'll draw them another block, and if you put retail there, then there's a destination. And the way the building is massed, it pushes out more the gray mass towards Delaware. So, you almost create a sheltered cove in that area. And that's why I was thinking that corner of Third and Eldorado. I agree that, like, fully fronting Eldorado is, I don't think any, that doesn't feel, I'm not a retail specialist, but that doesn't feel like that would work. But the thought is, you grab this corner, you have signage that everyone that's coming into downtown would see because they all get stopped at the red light here. So, they would have a moment to see a little bit of signage, oh, there's something there. And then, you know, a more friendly walking environment that's now been created, maybe people will come there. Sorry to run on on that one, but that was my thinking on that, just for clarity.
Thank you. Those are great thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you to staff, public, and the applicant and owner for your input this evening. And I credit the applicant with being courageous enough to propose a mixed-use project in that site and attempting to alleviate some of our housing crunch. Yet, the proposed uses do not fit with, I think, the best use of this property. The proximity of this project to downtown Caltrain and numerous Class A office buildings makes it a highly valuable piece of property that should be used to its fullest potential as outlined for the city's general plan. The citizens of San Mateo strongly support buildings of up to 12 stories high in the transit corridor, and this project's site is ripe to make those desires happen. Combined with AB 2011, the city's restrictive and in turn exclusionary, exclusionary height and density policies are temporarily null and void because of the builder's remedy, and this opens the opportunity to build the types of buildings the citizens are clamoring for. The city should welcome these higher buildings because it's what the public wants. The cost savings garnered by scale of economies allows this project to substantially supply the city with much-needed housing. This opportunity may not be available in the near future. As evidenced with numerous large entitled residential projects being delayed due to financing and restrictive height and density policies compromising the return on investment, now is the time to maximize these properties and build the housing that is widely supported by the residents of our city. The land construction, financing, and city fees have all combined to essentially shut down housing projects, with the city due in large part to the height and density restrictions. Building taller and denser residential properties is economically and environmentally sound, which in turn leads to a more equitable housing environment, all of which are keys for the general plan. I implore the owner to supply the product that they are best known for, multifamily residential, and use this asset to its fullest advantage for the benefit of all Samitans. With that said, looking at the current project and the footprint of the two buildings, if that, if that is what the applicant is set on moving forward with, I would encourage the applicant to, instead of building two separate properties, two separate buildings, build one building within the same footprint, have the commercial down below and put residential above, and use as many housing or bonuses, state bonuses, that you can. As it pertains to public services, it was quite eye-opening to hear a lot of the commenters state the loss of those services are going to not only impact the business owners, but also the people who are employed there. And unfortunately, that is a circumstance that has happened numerous times in that area, and it does put strain on people who are working in those industries. What I would like to see as a commercial component on the ground floor would be a childcare center. Our city is in desperate need for childcare. There is a childcare fund that the city has to help build childcare facilities, and this area, I think, would be ripe for that type of development. That is my, those are my comments on the proposed uses. And if we want to go to the building design, we can start anywhere you guys want.
Can I just comment on what you said?
Sure.
I don't know if we can, you know, I worry about saying anything about the builder's remedy because that could go away. That's a very dubious thing that is not, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty there for folks. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there, but I would want to note, just to like restate what I said about 2011. So, currently, there is no way that this project legally, using our city codes and the state density bonus, could go really beyond the number of units that it's already proposing. And so, that's, again, only 30% of the square footage of that site. So, if they wanted to have a safe, easily legally defensible project that was more residential, substantially more residential, they could use current state law AB 2011. And by that, it would be 100 units. Now, again, this is not something that the city can force them to, but it is something that they have as an option.
Correct. And that's all we're looking at this evening, is different options and opinions.
Commissioner Nugent, do you remember what the affordability requirement is of AB 2011?
Yeah, it's tiered, and I think it would more or less, so my data that I was referring to is for mixed income, and it would correspond to what the city's, Samitao's inclusionary ordinance.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
I think there's, since it's tiered, there's a way to increase the density, but then that requires higher levels of affordability, if I remember correctly.
No, it's basically, you either do a mixed income and you get the mixture based on, you know, satisfying some sort of, like, is it, you know, 5% or 10% very low income? Is it 15% low income? So, you meet the mixed income some way or another, or it's affordable 100%, and then you get different. So, I just, yeah, I don't, we don't need to go too far into it, but...
So, should we move on to the building design?
Yes.
Through the chair, I just wanted to, oh, Mazari Makari, Assistant City Attorney. Under AB 2011, housing that is 100% affordable to lower-income households would be allowed anywhere, as long as it's not environmentally sensitive land or next to industrial land. And then, there's different income categories regarding, as you all said, whether it would be for rent or for sale. But I just wanted to chime in and let you know.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to start?
Thank you, through the chair. I was just reviewing because I've got a lot written on this topic. The, I'm going to just, I'm going to go for design, I'm going to start with massing, then style, then materiality, and then I'll try to give specific comments that, you know, people can at least hopefully understand where I'm headed with it. And I'm just going to open with the height. I mean, I love San Mateo. I want to live here the rest of my life. I've lived in New York and San Francisco and Atlanta and other places with tall buildings before. So, big buildings don't scare me. I don't want to like, per se, but the, maybe it's the, maybe it's the massing, maybe it's the way the renderings are working, and I think this is early days in general, so there's a lot of work to be done purely with the way the renderings are conveying or not conveying the intent to date. But it does, it feels big there. Said it. It feels big, and that doesn't mean it can't, it can't still proceed. But if I was sculpting mass, you know, sort of a traditional urban design way, I would think you get taller buildings towards downtown and you taper off to the community. And so, I think it's a bit higher than I would expect if you were trying to interpolate between metropolitan Block 21. Buildings change, they don't last forever, so I'm not, and as far as I know, we don't have a policy about sculpting the three-dimensional mass of this area. But it feels a bit big, and I just, I heard people say that, I felt it myself. I'm not saying take a floor off, but I just want to be able to talk about that and how we, how we can manage it as best we can. I think if you look at it towards Block 21, it's not that big of a deal to me. And even towards the metropolitan, it's stepping up, it's an in-between. But if you look at the blocks kind of to the north and the south, some of the catty-corner positions, you're jumping right down into single-family homes across the street. So, it's a big transition. So, I'm just aware of that and thinking of that as I go through this. That being said, for what it is, I'm on board with the massing approach, and we've had these discussions before. I look forward to having them again. There's different ways to approach a... There's different ways to approach a big building, and I tend to talk about breaking it down versus doing something unified, and so those are multiple pathways that it can be looked at. But what I see is a large mass that's been broken down into three pieces, a residential one and two office ones. They're pushed back from the street in some cases, they're carved away higher up in certain places, they're articulated as sort of logis versus masses, there's recesses carved. Like, to me, I see a lot of work being done from a purely massing front, and I'm seeing that the two office masses have a bit of a different rhythm, different bay width for the columns that are working to distinguish them. The residential looks sort of like far more, not far more, like more developed to me, more granular, which I would expect and which I think is appropriate, and sort of the balance between carving back at the ground plane and versus, you know, making trade-offs between carving off the ground plane versus carving off up in the air. I would just, not to belabor that one, the massing to me feels like it's in the right direction. It's more, I'll talk more about the style and really the materiality. I'm okay with contemporary architecture as a style. I am very, I would say, keen to think carefully about new buildings downtown that are in the sphere of influence of our historic core, the historic buildings, things that are adjacent to it. To me, as I looked at this, this is not the time to take that approach. This is the time to almost frame and make more meaningful what is actually historic. When you look at this site, which is on the other side of the tracks, it's three blocks removed from the actual historic district, and it's surrounded by an area that is a melange architecturally of different things. So that's my personal stance, but I think there's a kind of, you know, pretty clear comments from the community about seeking out a different style that's maybe recalling back to other things that have been done in downtown, even if they haven't been done right here. So I'm kind of, I could be convinced either way on style. I would say the massing, I think, is on the right track. The style, I think it can work a lot of different ways, and I don't have a strong opinion other than I want it to be coherent and well-distilled and well-executed. Okay, materiality, excuse me. If we're gonna do contemporary and something that's clearly not historic, I think the materiality becomes really important because you're not just calling up from some standard set of moves that you make and referencing them. You're doing something bespoke, sorry to use a different project, or you're doing something into the void. So what I see here, the corrugated metal, it looks like it's just been evenly applied across the large masses, to me is coming across as cold and severe, too industrial, someone said warehousey. It's fine to reference warehouses, but it feels like it's not, it's not feeling at all right to me. Those two masses, the larger and the smaller office mass, or the red and the gray, if you will, I don't think just applying the same material there with a different color is sufficient. That move of taking the same material and just changing the color and applying it to multiple masses, as is being done right now, I think works at a much smaller scale. So two-story townhome or next to a three-story townhome, you can sort of put the same material and just change the color, and it's relating to a pedestrian scale, I think, but this is much bigger, so just sort of in contrast, I don't think that's working. And when you do contemporary, as a great modernist architect once said, "God is in the details," and you don't have details at the pre-app stage, but I'm not picking up on a compelling vision for this materiality, and so I think I would be looking to find that and have it create excitement from at least the portion of the community that's willing to consider contemporary architecture, and try to then build on that. So I'll touch on the red mass, the gray mass. The red mass, there, you have, you've got a bottom, middle, top going on with the red mass, you've changed materials at the ground plane, but it's just plaster, so sort of plaster below and the corrugated above, kind of, that, to me, is not enough articulation, and it's not the rich enough materials to really provide a welcoming pedestrian environment. Instead of the plaster, you know, board-form concrete, if it's done with the right striations, the right sculpting, could even be an interpretation of that corrugation, it could be richer. So saying on the red mass, I think more needs to be done to connect that building mass down to pedestrian scale. The gray mass doesn't do that, even do that, and that may be part of the vision that this thing soars and rises, but I'm not convinced by that right now. I just see corrugated metal coming straight down to the ground, it's not really broken up. There is the one move on Third, but not on, sorry, on Delaware, but not on Third, and I'm reacting to that and looking for a richer pedestrian experience. And I could be missing it, the corrugation could be like Paul Rudolph modernism, and it's amazing, and I just don't see it. But what I see right now feels just flat and warehousey and not resonating. Where you're headed with the one-story office tab sticking out on Delaware, framing a sort of a glass feature above it, I think is on the right track. That's a cool idea to me. I don't think it's resonating yet, but I see where you're headed. I would say you might want to consider sort of a balancing counterpart to that idea on Third, because the gray mass on Third is not doing anything at the ground floor, it's not changing, it's just landing, and so I think something more could be done there. Corner treatment, that Delaware and Third corner, I think there is an opportunity to do something dramatic and vertical. If you can balance bottom, middle, top, you can create sort of a pedestrian scale. You still would be left with a sort of a tall vertical mass to do something interesting, hopefully with form and material that calls out the corner, but at least with light and signage, and do it in a contemporary way. It doesn't need to be a traditional turret or something else, it can be something really inspired by the materiality itself and the massing. There's a lot to talk about on these pieces, sorry. The upper setback mass, just consistent with what I've said before, in my opinion, I'm being okay with taking masses, breaking them down. You have the residential mass, the red mass, the gray mass, then you have this upper setback one. And for me, that needs to be articulated more differently than the other masses. It doesn't feel unique enough as an element. I like, I like to do things that are more pedestrian and earthy at the ground scale and then go glassier as you go up. I know not everyone likes that, but to me, it's caught right now, it's in-between. It's not, it's not the, if you want it to be the same, it's not the same enough, if you want it to be different, it's not different enough. All those things said, with all of this, I'm trying to articulate something that's coherent and interesting in the architecture that has pride and presence. And actually, a word I heard people say a lot was charm. Is charm too much to ask? I would like us to think of, and maybe site and landscape's a better place for that, but I don't know if I've heard people say charm so much, and, yeah, let's try charm. Last thing, the residential mass, I don't have that many comments on it. It feels like it's on the right track. Again, the details could be well-done or not-well-done, but I like the express sill at the ground floor, the warmth and scale of the brick, the modulation of the masses that are above, and sort of the two-floor articulated base with the minimal pediment. To me, it's all feeling like that will relate well to the pedestrian and provide opportunities for nice detailing further above, so I don't have that many comments on the residential. Thank you for listening as I went through all that. Those are all my comments on building design.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. I think some of my comments might be, is it like a dialogue with what you've said? And so I appreciate...
I welcome them to be the same or very different.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's, it's good, and I found what you said was very interesting. You know, this is assuming you don't go the AB 2011 route and pursue this project more or less the way you've designed it as you have. So these are my design comments, and I do want to completely compartmentalize them from my earlier proposed uses comment. So first off, I want to say that I am absolutely not categorically against contemporary architecture. I have done many beautiful modern projects myself, and I think that they can be extremely beautiful, but I am done with such contemporary designs in and around downtown. A smattering of contemporary buildings can provide visual interest. You see this in some European cities that have a few spots, and it's like, wow, that's really cool. But once you hit a certain threshold, each new contemporary building will not simply contribute to the fabric, it will actually begin to degrade the quality of our charming downtown, and I think we are starting to hit that limit. And I believe that in order to be appreciated, especially given the mass that you're proposing, new buildings now must significantly contribute to the city's charm in order to balance this. This is going to be very prominent as people are coming in and out of the city from 101 and traveling along Delaware. So ultimately, the proposed contemporary architectural style is not appropriate for the neighborhood, and a different architectural style needs to be considered. You know, unfortunately, you know, some of the tools planning has as far as like what we talk about are height and setbacks and massing, but I actually think that for what you're proposing, some of these, some of those tools are actually less important than actually getting the style, the style and the scale of the detail right for this. And I do appreciate that this is a very preliminary design. Like, I understand that there is, there's a lot of, you know, there's not that much to, especially the office portions, right now, and I think that, you know, that allows you a chance to pivot. So I'm going to help you understand what I would like to see, and I think what I understand the community, pretty much everybody who has commented or has taken interest in this project would more or less like to see this project form into. And I'm gonna talk first about design styles and use some example buildings because a picture is worth 1,000 words. I could talk, you know, minute details, but I do think that, you know, if you're to just keep the massing more or less the same, it's really difficult for me to get into the nitty-gritty, and I should just tell you, people, including me, are looking for one of three things, and, you know, actually, overall, I do appreciate that you are mixing up the facades, especially, you can see this in the residential portion, so it looks like there are two or three buildings along the face of each block. That is good, very good, very, very good. I really appreciate that, and I'd like that to continue. You know, ideally, no building should, no building should feel much more than 50 to 60 feet wide. Obviously, the office portions are larger than that, and I think that there are some good examples in and around the Bay Area that provide a very, very good alternative to, you know, the greater-than-50-foot-wide building. But, you know, generally, you need visual interest at about that rhythm or less for a good walkable place, and this is a good walkable place, and it's going to be a better walkable place. So design styles to incorporate, and I've got three that you could use. So Spanish Colonial Revival could be the entire thing, the entire thing could be done in Spanish Colonial Revival, and I think that the neighborhood, again, I live in North Central, which is, this is, that's this neighborhood, would appreciate. You could do the whole thing. You could also mix it up, you could do Spanish Colonial Revival, you could do the sort of turn-of-the-century brick warehouse style if you want to get larger glazing on, especially for the office. And then, for lack of a better label, you could do sort of a late 19th-century folk Victorian with siding, and I'm gonna give you some examples of all three of those. So Spanish Colonial Revival, I think good contemporary design of this style is the entire block of Ramona Street in Palo Alto from University Avenue to Hamilton Avenue. So there's a larger building of this stretch, includes 581 Ramona Street, and this is where Sweet Green is in Palo Alto, and that is right on the corner of Hamilton and University, I mean, sorry, Hamilton and Ramona. And you could, I could see much larger windows or more glazing if you need to provide additional light inside. Another good example in that same area is the Graduate Palo Alto. It says Hotel President, and that's at 488 University Avenue. So these are two similarly scaled buildings to what you're proposing, and I think that if people saw that coming into the city or coming out of the city, they would actually be like, wow, that's, this is San Mateo, and I would feel that way, too. Alternatively, or if you want to add this to a mix in order to get some more, some more light into the office areas, a good recent installation of the turn-of-the-century brick warehouse style is at 2075 Broadway in Redwood City at the corner of Broadway and Jefferson. I think a lot of people are familiar with it, it's pretty recently, I think it just opened in 2019 or something, but that's a great one. I think everybody that I talk to that cares and is involved in San Mateo's building who are residents tend to appreciate that one. And again, it's brand-new, and it looks great, and so you could mix that in. And then, lastly, is the late 19th-century folk Victorian style. So a contemporary example of this is the Intercontinental, the Clement Monterey. Sorry, that's a really clunky name, but it's the Intercontinental, the Clement Monterey, and this is at 750 Cannery Row in Monterey, California, near the aquarium. You know, it's a hotel, so I could definitely see larger windows than what the hotel provides, but it is a good, good example of like a non-Mediterranean or Spanish Colonial Revival that would also be appropriate for integrating with the historic styles of downtown San Mateo, because there's also styles like that downtown, and you could use, you know, fiber cement board for the exterior, and I think that that would also be much appreciated. So, you know, you probably wouldn't want to have that be the entire thing, but you could do a portion of it. And then, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about general building design. I think that the traditional building design would give you more texture and more of a fractal-like scaling of this texture that is more interesting and mentally comprehensible by people who view the building both from a close distance and a further distance. Contemporary design is poor at this, they can do it, it can be done, but I don't think that it's worth the effort. People are not gonna like this building. I think you're gonna get, you know, if you want to continue to be building buildings in San Mateo, people are gonna be appreciating you doing this change in design style. And then, also, I really appreciate and I want to encourage you to continue to mix the facade design up so that it looks like there are multiple buildings. Also, just on a general design, building design comment, the vertical composition of the buildings should have a top, a middle, and a base, so, you know, you can use bands and cornices to create vertical structure that kind of break up the blank texture of the building that it is currently. So there is a bottom kind of platform currently in the office buildings at the street level, and then it's, then there's like a big middle, and then there's a bit of a top to these. I think that... I think that you don't need to have quite such stark difference necessarily between those materials, but having more of a detailed composition between the top, the middle and the base would be appropriate. The gray part that says post and beam is a little bit too blank all the way down to the, to the lower level. And then, the last thing I'm going to talk about, just in terms of building design, is window design. So, generally, I mean, I appreciate that what you've done in this is you've, you have made it look like, or actually is, the windows being taller than they are wide, you know, they're separated by mullions and such. You know, I think that as a contemporary design, that's, that's a successful thing to do and I would like you to carry that over. You know, in general, with, with traditional designs, you have about 35% of the, of the wall is glazed, but, you know, if you wanted to do that more warehouse style, you could go beyond that. And then, you should provide vertical separation of the individual windows through the additions, the addition of mullions and either do pairs or triplets or, what is it, quadruplets? As you've done, as you've done. But again, you know, breaking it up with lights as you would see in a, in a warehouse style for just even more texture to the windows. And then, provide trim around the windows unless you're doing, you know, Spanish Colonial I do think the turn of the century brick warehouse does give you a little bit more flexibility as far as getting more light, so you do consider that, at least for a portion of it. I wouldn't do the entire thing, that style though, because that can be very heavy. And then, also try bay or box bay windows to break up some of the facade of the building and add texture. So, those are my building design comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sima?
Through the chair, thank you. I don't know how I'm going to follow such incredibly detailed and well thought out comments from my fellow commissioners. Those were, those are both really fantastic thoughts. I'll just start by saying that I, I'm not opposed to a contemporary design. I think one thing to consider and talk about is the mass timber construction because if you're going to go with mass timber, which it sounds like there's a commitment to doing, that has its own aesthetic and it's quite beautiful and, you know, you want to show it off. And so, every mass timber building I've seen is a modern contemporary style and is designed to make the mass timber be the feature. And so, I think about what does it look like to do mass timber in a turn of the century warehouse or in a Spanish Colonial Revival and I don't know, I haven't seen that.
Yeah. No, I think as a discussion, actually, you know, you think about timber, especially, you know, vertical columns and such like that. And that is a part of, of a lot of traditional architecture. You have big massive columns that are often, you know, dark stained column wood that you see in, you know, like the Spanish. So, it doesn't have to be, you know, the light, you know, the light Scandinavian feel of the, of the wood. You also look at the, I don't know if they're rafters or whatever, in many of the, the turn of the century warehouses that, that often had the big dome ceilings, they would either be steel structure or they would also be large beams that were wood and in a framework that were beams. And so, it would, it doesn't have to be steel, it doesn't have to be masonry, it can be a mixture and you don't have to show everything, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to show everything. Like, there's a, there's a modern architecture, you know, that love to like, oh, you know, we're going to show the structure because architects are really into that. But, you know what? Most laypeople aren't. Like, you can, wood is beautiful. You can do mass timber in a beautiful way. It can be beautiful contemporary, it can be beautiful traditional. And I encourage, you know, I often find that contemporary interiors are, are superior than a lot of traditional interiors because they tend to be more open and have more light and that doesn't, that, you know, going more traditional on the outside doesn't prevent that kind of thing inside. And so, I don't want to say, oh, because it's this particular material, it has to look like this. We've been using wood for thousands of years. You know, most, most of the traditional architectural detailing were based on wood frames to start and then turned into masonry to be fancy. And so, you know, it doesn't have to be. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good, good consideration. When I think about the location of that site, you're between the Metropolitan and Block 21. You know, Block 21 is very contemporary. Metropolitan, I don't know what to call the Metropolitan. It's Craftsman-ish. And so, I think that's the one caution I have is that commit to a single architectural style. You know, I, I don't think it works out well when there is an attempt to do a modern interpretation of a traditional style, like the modern version of Craftsman or the modern version of Spanish Colonial Revival just ends up looking like cheap Spanish Colonial Revival. So, I would, I would just say, pick, pick a style and then go all in, but I personally don't believe that contemporary would be out of place in that site. And, yeah, yeah.
I'm just, so, you're going to get, like, this is a massive building. And so, if you, it's bold to put a big building right there. And, you know, it may be, it's kind of a, you know, ignore Block 21 in those buildings, like, those are, those are done, but this could set, set us precedent for the future. And if you want to get more people on board to larger buildings, they, they need to be, the people need to appreciate them and you're going to get, you're just going to get more people on board if they're, like, certainly, there's people out there that like contemporary buildings. I'm not going to argue with that. But, there was a lot that was, that went wrong in the 20th century with contemporary architecture that is being healed, but it, it's not there yet as far as what we need at a fine-grained pedestrian level, unless you're doing it really well. And you got to be a fantastic architect to do it really well.
I think in terms of the massing, I think this is where sometimes you're going to get a difference of opinion on who you talk to. I've said this before, I do not like overly articulated buildings. I think they've, they've become something that people point to that they don't like, even at the same time as they tell you that the massing is too big. So, yeah, just, I would be careful not to overly articulate the facade. I also don't like the overly tiered wedding cake buildings where every additional story goes back and back and back until you have a wedding cake on your city block. I love the reference of 2075 Broadway in Redwood City and ironically, the one thing I don't like about that building is the, what appears to be 18 inch indentation halfway down the mass because to me, it just, it feels odd. It's like, why is that there? When I look at, there was a letter from San Mateo Heritage Alliance, right? And in the turn of the century buildings that they reference, they are all one solid facade. I think, the thing that I take away from public comments about the massing and the articulation is that you can do a single facade if you put in those details and charm that give it visual interest. Can't just be like one solid wall of brick.
Sorry, do you mind if I jump in? Because I do, I think this is a good discussion and, you know, we're going to go into design more next week. And so, you know, articulation and all that, like, I think that that is a, you know, is something that planning has been trying to figure out and you've respriced in the past, like, a Paris block, like a...
Right.
And what you get is, those actually aren't single buildings. They're actually the same, they come to the, to the property line, but there's usually like three or four different buildings on a block and they all are a little bit different. And just that variation is what is visually interesting to people.
Yep.
And I think that that's probably what you're looking for, is that...
You're right.
Looking for, okay.
Yep.
Because, just like you're walking through a forest, if all the tree, if it's a tree plantation, it's really boring.
Yep.
Like, but if you're walking through a natural forest, you're going to have some bigger trees, you're going to have some, you know, smaller trees, they're going to be here, there and it's going to be continuity, but also variety.
Yep.
And that's what a Paris block provides.
Right. Great, great comment. Another thing that San Mateo Heritage Alliance calls out in their letter is weak corners and this trend, I think, in recent development, to like chop the corner off the most strongest prominent corner of the site. And so, I really like that the current design does not do that, that you get to the corner and there is a strong corner. So, just want to call that out as something I like about the current design. Something I've been thinking about a lot, I get this, I get asked this question so much by people in the public, which is, why aren't we converting office to residential? And I wonder if there's any benefit to thinking about flexibility and future uses and thinking about what would it mean to do a floor plate that is being used for office now, but 30 years from now, 50 years from now, if the needs of the community change, it wouldn't be one of those ones you have to scrape to the ground and rebuild, like, there would be a reusable way to convert.
For the record, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then, I think the, the flexibility thing, this kind of came up when we were talking about retail uses, but, you know, we just had a project come before us and say, hey, we've got ground floor retail at Hillsdale Mall, it's vacant for three years, can we please get a special use permit to do something different? And I think thinking about this in that sort of flexible way is an interesting idea to say, could we program ground floor retail on this site in a way that if it doesn't work out, if we can't fill it, you know, we could come back and use it for office in the future. And then, this is like a somewhat tactical comment, but I was thinking about the dog walkers in this area and where I see people walking, where I personally walk. And Eldorado is a pretty residential street, right? It's the Metropolitan, but it's still residential. And when I see people walking and walking their pets or like kids scooting on the sidewalks, it's usually along Eldorado. Like I said, it's not on Third and Fourth. And I thought about the garage entrances. They're very big, they're on Eldorado and anytime there's a garage entrance in a very pedestrian area, I get nervous for safety reasons. I don't know how many times a car has almost hit me downtown when I'm exiting or when I'm, when I'm walking on a sidewalk and they're exiting. And so, our gateway vision calls for auto entries on Third Ave wherever possible. And I wonder what it would mean to the design to consider the garage entrances on Third and not on Eldorado. Those are only my design comments.
Thank you all. And thank you to both architectural teams for your initial work on this project. I still think that one single building would work better in this area. I, I do agree with Commissioner Nugent in the sense that I like modern architecture, but the trend over the last four years has brought us repetitive styles, repetitive modern architecture downtown and it's been, becoming much more difficult to get a sense of where. It's all mixing together and it reminds me, many decades ago, throughout California, every strip mall was Spanish Revival and it just ruined the architecture components because it just became so repetitive constantly. And I think San Mateo had found itself in that type of, of situation and made some corrections to their, their, the styles that they wanted to build. So, I really don't think this building belongs in this area. I don't think that it will differentiate itself from the pack. And working with RMW and BDE in the past and, and the client or the applicant willing, openly willing to make some changes, I think that's great. I don't have any other details because they've been covered. Some of the buildings that Mr. Nugent mentioned, especially the one at Canary Row, is a gorgeous building. It's a, it's a hotel, so I don't know how that's going to mix. And the properties in Palo Alto are gorgeous also. Now, since this discussion has been going on, one of my favorite materials has always been red brick. I like simplicity, I like, to be, it's a simple elegant material to work with. And on Townsend Street in San Francisco, there are two or three buildings that have all mass interiors, mass timber interiors, which are really kind of cool. But, some of them have, they're three or four stories high and then they've added on three or four stories of a modern building, modern contemporary building set back. And at first, I thought it was odd, but now I like that architecture, I think is very nice. But, I think, you know, the discussions here and the discussion that the public has brought, I would hope that you don't need any more guidelines or assistance in tweaking these buildings. The massing, I, I'm fine with the massing. I think height and density in all aspects for our city are going to help us create more parks, reduce traffic, reduce greenhouse gases and give us a better opportunity to function as a sustainable city. So, here we go to item number three, site plan and landscape. Do we have any landscape architects?
If only. Let me pull this, this one off. The, I, I struggled with this one just because I was, so it, it's early days and there's, there's things that are concerning to me about making sure the pedestrian realm is generous, making sure we have room for the, the bike lanes that are contemplated for Third and Delaware. And, but at the same time, it's so early that, that things are going to still move around. Just technically speaking, as the building gets designed, things are going to push and pull. And so, I was, you know, I'm reading the downtown plan, the gateway design guidelines, the pedestrian master plan, trying to coalesce all of it. It, to me, it didn't feel like it always met perfectly, although staff was great in providing clarification. So, I think in, in terms of trying to be guided by those documents, I feel compelled to just sort of talk about general goals and aspirations for, and I have a few specific things, but I think all those documents are trying to do the same thing, they're well-intentioned. They're trying to make sure that, that there's, that there is a pedestrian and safe, a generous, sorry, not pedestrian, but a generous and safe pedestrian zone that's hopefully not pedestrian in that sense, more special, that's fitting in with what's, what's around it. So, those documents, I think, will all get sorted out in the way they apply as you do more of the technical studies, as you figure out if your curb line is changing, you figure out some of those, those things. So, while I was diving into that, I feel like I might be getting hung up on it and I'll just say that the, to me, the, the pedestrian edges of the project are, are of the utmost importance to me and taking an area that's not, that's not friendly right now, like, we have an, there's an opportunity to, you know, Third and Fourth in a way are what some people might call car sewers. They're, they're, they're one way, they're fast, they're efficient, they're getting cars in and out of the city and unless we get rid of Highway 101, that's not going to change. But, we still need to help people get through. But we still need to help people get through here so they can get to downtown, or if they're trying to head north to south. So that, to me, is one of the most important parts of the project, because it's in a challenged environment. And while you can't solve all of the problems that are out there with cars, I think it's important to, this is where I'd wanna draw a hard line and spend a lot of time making sure that the bike lane works well. And this is not, this is more for staff than anybody else, but making sure these pieces fit together in a way that prioritizes bikes and pets whenever possible, especially in this environment where it can be so difficult to make it hospitable. Because what happens if we don't have pedestrians? If we don't have an enjoyable pedestrian experience, then we're not gonna have pedestrians. If people aren't walking, they're just gonna get in their cars instead. So now we have more cars. Without pedestrians, we have a less safe environment for people to be in. And so to me, this is, the way it fits into the neighborhood, we've spent, you know, it's important to talk about the design, that's, the architectural style and everything is definitely crucial in this transitional zone, but so is the public and pedestrian elements being successful. So this is where I'm gonna kind of, I'm glancing at the prompting, the question posed. I wanna circle back to the retail piece, because to me, part of making it a successful pedestrian realm is having some interactive element. And I'm definitely, you know, not happy with the amount of retail that we've lost in the areas. I totally agree that retail is challenged, and that in some cases, we have too much. But the amount that we're losing on this side of the tracks is very concerning to me. And I think there needs to be some amount of retail here, I've talked about that, but it's not just for the sake of keeping the retail, it's for creating actual interaction. Just walking by an office frontage, even if it's well-appointed, if you will, well-furnished, is not really creating the interaction. So that, I was talking about this earlier, that step back on Third, you have the makings of a nice plaza. I think that's the area where it should be possible to make it enjoyable to be there. And I hope I'm not being too much of an optimist here, I'm trying to be, I was out on that corner this morning, I'm trying to be realistic as well. You step back enough, I think that you can create buffers from the car traffic coming down Third that make it a place that people want to stay. I think you're doing the right things thus far, but I don't think it's there. I would wanna see more things to help people congregate and feel, you know, that sort of, if you get too close to the cars, your heart rate kind of goes up, and you're just not gonna stay somewhere, you just subconsciously don't feel good. I think we can make it feel good there, but I think part of it is having retail, part of it is having a plaza there, they sort of work in concert with each other. And, you know, while a lot of the retail is challenged, there's, I don't think the retail has to have the parking lot in front of it for it to work. If I close my eyes, I feel like Ike's could still be there, for example. And you could be sitting out there eating a sandwich, you could read the newspaper, you could admire someone's new labradoodle, or whatever the latest thinking and dog trends are, and you could talk to your neighbors and have conversation. And I think there's a way for that to happen on this project. It's not, the office can't provide that, it shouldn't have to. The residential can't totally do it either, it's the third place, as people say, that can happen here. So to me, and I, sorry, I will get to a couple of comments on sort of design here, but to me, that all needs to come together. I think it can totally work, I think your heart is in the right place, you're making the right moves to get us there. But I think we need retail, and then I think we need that to be a place that focuses on making it comfortable for people to be there. And I'm dancing around all this, because I can't give you specific items, because you're gonna get some curveball about the curb line can't go here, and this thing can't happen. So sort of trying to give you a North Star of overcoming the site's challenges to create a pedestrian-friendly environment. So on that Third, just to sum it up, on that Third Avenue, I think keep going the way you're headed. On Eldorado, I think it could use a little more at the ground plane. I think the architecture of the residential building is headed in the right direction. I thought I wrote this down somewhere, sorry. The, yeah, I would say benches, planting, patios if you can get it, porches, stoops. I think the way the residential building's working, you're not gonna create entries there, but that ground plane on Eldorado, if the ground plane on Third has the sort of potential to be a plaza, the ground plane on Eldorado has a potential to reflect the architectural character of San Mateo's neighborhoods, kind of the way that is talked about in the gateway design guidelines. I think there's some intent there, if I can squint and imagine what they were thinking in 1994 when they wrote it, to create meaningful sort of character and texture of a more residential street, which is, kind of commissioners are talking about Eldorado being that. So I think more needs to be done there, but it feels totally possible to me. And I think that's where you're trying to head, is someone can kind of walk their dog there, look at the flowers, and feel like they're experiencing yet another flavor of San Mateo's residential, you know, varied, rich, and diverse residential neighborhoods. And I think when you're on Third, you're trying to create a place where people can gather and actually interact and sort of build the fabric of community a little bit. The last thing I'll say is I was walking around the new, the old track site, now I think is gonna be called Brick Line, but it's the track site, it's across from, it's at Baldwin and B. And there's, I was really excited about it, as an appropriate complement to the downtown pedestrian fabric. There's just great details that exist at the right scale at the ground level, there's a lot of activation with retail and lobbies, rich and enhanced materiality. And I'm looking at that and thinking it's worth the effort, it's worth the investment in those frontages to create this sort of dignified civic space along the edge. And so I just wanna ask you to reach and try to achieve that sort of thing here at the ground plane. To me, it's as important as any other part of the project. And that is, I didn't really talk about landscape architecture that much.
Okay, let's get into landscape. First, I wanna mention that the gateway design guidelines provides the generous landscaping space you see in front of the metropolitan. And those trees are wonderful. The space for the roots has made those trees grow quite substantially since the metropolitan was built. And it's a very comfortable place, considering that it's an off-ramp, or on-ramp, for highway, basically. And so, you know, I think about the gateway design guidelines and how you're asking for a concession or a waiver to not apply those. And, you know, that's tough, but I think that I can accept that if the architecture is good. Okay? So you're still providing street trees, and I think that, you know, looking at Eldorado and Third, and there's enough space for the street trees to become good-sized and very comfortable, those are gonna be the most substantial portion of the landscape over time. The ground plane looks good. I'm sure it's going to adjust over the course, but as far as the overall scale and feel, you have with a ground plane along Eldorado and Third, it's great. The thing that I have a comment on for the landscape is South Delaware Street. You know, I would like to see the sidewalk follow the guidelines of the pedestrian master plan. I understand that it's coming up against our zoning code. And so what I see as being necessary for people's comfort and better feeling of safety is, along Delaware, you really should switch the location of the proposed trees and where the landscape zone is, which is right against the building, and put those trees between the pedestrian through zone and the street traffic. It's gonna provide a much more inviting and pedestrian-friendly environment for people walking along Delaware. And that structural, psychological barrier between pedestrians and traffic that the trees will provide is much better. I understand it's nice to have, you know, landscaping up against the building, you know, it makes the building look good. But I would rather have a nice architecture to look at as I walk by than that landscape buffer. I wanna see the trees between the through zone and this traffic on Delaware. It's doable. If it's for some reason not feasible, I would like to see very strong reasons from staff and the applicant to know why. Because Delaware is also a busy street, and it's so much nicer when there's trees along there. And then the other thing I wanna talk about is the landscape, is that it does not feel like there's enough creditable common open space. And I would say that the loss of that open space for the residential units is extremely unfortunate for the density bonus waiver. I would like to see some creativity to get some additional space for people. That's all I would say. Otherwise, I think the landscape is on a good track. Delaware and, you know, common open space, those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have very similar comments, I think, to Commissioner Nugent, which is the Delaware landscape plan is the first thing that jumped out at me. And the reason I asked about Block 21 is because my memory of Block 21 is that the sidewalk and the street trees on that side were much more substantial. And I was worried we were gonna end up with this imbalanced look to Delaware, where one side has a wider sidewalk and has, you know, really big and mature street trees, and then the other side doesn't, and then that would feel awkward for that street. So I won't repeat what Commissioner Nugent just said, I'll just say that I agree with it. And I'll go maybe one step further and piggyback off of what Commissioner Wiggins said. I think he called Third Avenue a car sewer. And I've talked about how busy those streets feel and how I don't like to walk along them. And that is my concern, is that you would invest a lot of money in creating an outdoor plaza, you would put retail along that frontage with the hopes that someone would wanna sit there, have their coffee, have their sandwich, and enjoy the outdoors. But I just don't think that's gonna feel like a good experience, because you've got three lanes of traffic all going in the same direction, and people drive so fast, and it's loud. It's not a pleasant area to sit. And so that's why I keep going back to, I don't know that Third is the right place for urban activation, I think that's the term you were looking for. The site needs some urban activation, some space where that community can be created. And maybe landscaping can solve that, but I keep wondering if Humboldt, or even Delaware, would feel better than Third, just because of the way Third and Fourth are car sewers.
You mean Eldorado?
Sorry, Eldorado, not Humboldt. Eldorado or Delaware. I was just thinking about Beach Hut Deli at the corner of Delaware and Concar, which has a really, you know, it's a corner, has, it's always busy, right? There's always people in there, I go there, has a nice outdoor seating area. I don't think I've ever seen anyone sitting outside. Are you about to correct me?
Through the chair, I have sat outside.
You've sat outside. Okay, Martin will sit outside.
I think it's a good example.
But it's like, you know, Delaware and Concar, it's an on-ramp to 92. It doesn't feel good to sit out there, I think, for most people. I appreciate the warmth of the visual of an outdoor seating area, but I don't know how well utilized it is.
So this is not a comment that I had prepared, but your comment has spurred my thought. And I see what you're saying as far as that outdoor space along Third, and I hear you, like, that is a loud spot. It's actually quieter on Delaware.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're gonna see the cars going by, are gonna see the post and beam, or whatever signage is there. I get that from, like, you're coming up with the designs of the building, but it isn't going to be as pleasant to sit there. That is the north side of the building. You're probably going to get more use and have a much more pleasant spot if you did it in the middle of the Delaware block, because you're gonna be away from...
I agree.
Yeah. And, you know, eventually that gas station's gonna go under, because eventually, but it's gonna be a long time potentially, but eventually that will get redeveloped.
I think especially with the one-story, I don't know what to call that.
Step back.
Step back?
Yeah.
It feels much more human-scale on that frontage, right? It feels like, I would sit out there, and I'd wait for someone in that office building, or I would, if there happened to be retail there, I would sit out there, and I'd, you know, eat. When you're on the Third Avenue side, it is a very large, big facade, and then you've got all this zooming traffic, like, I just don't know if it would feel good to sit out there.
Yeah, even having just a drop-off carve-out for cars on Delaware, and then having that space, I don't know, I'm not here to design it, but I'm just...
The other thing I would mention, I don't know if there's been any shadow studies or sun studies yet, but shade over the seating area, I think is gonna be pretty important, too, if you want people to sit and congregate there.
Eventually, you're going to get trees there, but again, that is on the north side, so you're gonna actually get pretty much shade. Although it might bake in the afternoons during the summer.
Through the chair, quick response. I went back and forth in my mind on this, I'd summarize it, but I, I don't know, I cannot convince myself that Delaware is going to be, respectfully seen a different way. I think it's hard either way, but I just cannot wrap my head around anything on Delaware working. I don't quite know why. I hear what you're saying, there are more cars going on Third and Fourth, it's true. And when I looked at it, I was trying to imagine the step back, and I was like, you know, like, it's not really generous on Delaware. It would be nice if it was matching to the Pedmaster Plan versus the zoning. At the same time, I look at it today, and it's gonna be so much better than it is today, like, it's awful today. And I ask myself, who actually walks up Delaware? Who's gonna be on this block? Look at the block south and north of here, and even the one after that, this is just a collection of curb cuts, where you feel like you're gonna get hit every time. Like, no one is actually, maybe this is, you know, I don't know, not optimistic on my part and inconsistent with what I've said elsewhere. No one's really gonna walk eight or, a number of blocks on Delaware unless you just love having your life in danger, or having that feeling as a pedestrian. And I was like, I came to the conclusion that, for me, there was a better chance of creating a safe haven on Third. And so, I don't know. The other thing is that it really felt like it reached out to the neighborhood on that side, versus being, and I think Commissioner Nugent's probably right, if you do it on Delaware, kind of do it in the middle. It feels like it's really facing downtown and not the neighborhood. So I was probably feeling optimistic that you could do something that welcomed the neighborhood in, in a place that they might actually already be walking. So, but I agree that it's hard either way, and I won't accept it, just like us not being able to figure out something, you know, so...
Yeah, to kind of jump on that, so, again, architecturally, it makes sense where it is. Like, that does feel inviting, like, as far as you're walking down, you're going down Third, you see it, the building looks good with that little jog. But I look at the space there, and I don't think anybody's gonna sit there. I don't think anybody's gonna use that.
I, having... Having stood there this morning, it's 12 feet to the face of Ices and like the little vine-colored covered wall there. I totally agree. If I'm remembering correctly, it's going to jump back an additional 20 feet to the face of the building. So you're 32 feet away from the road. And in my head, my now-receding landscape architectural practice work, like, if I've got 32 feet to work with, and that's the max, so it would be less than that for tables and chairs. But if I'm in 20-odd feet, I ought to be able to mitigate it enough? That's where I was headed with it. I totally agree. I see today, you feel, it feels quite bad. It's actually a pinch point right there. There's a pinch point there and another pinch point at the other end of the development. So that's what it hinges on, maybe, is can you actually achieve it?
I mean, it looks good. The issue is, what is there to draw people out? Just a bench, nobody's going to sit on that right there. Like, there just isn't enough people, and there isn't enough activity. Maybe somebody working in the office is going to go down there with their lunch.
Oh, but if there's an Ices there.
Yeah, if there's an Ices there, then you have cafe seating.
Yeah, yeah. That's what you need there. Sorry, that's what I've been...
Oh, okay.
Sorry, that's what I've been saying. It's on the right track. It needs retail in it. Once you put retail there, you're going to change the landscaping layout, right?
Yeah.
You're going to almost flip it and take the chance to create threshold and buffer along the edge of the sidewalk and have a little protected seating area in there. It is going to be closer to the building. That's where I was thinking this, you could overcome the challenge of Third there. That's, sorry, that's, I was, I'm not saying it works today. I'm saying if you push it further and enhance it even more, like, almost like, you know, you would, you need, even if the restaurant's closed, you almost need something to draw people in. So some, like, not trying to sign you all up for interactive art, but an interactive art element, something that says, hey, it's safe to be here. It's, you know, we've carved out a niche that's pedestrian-friendly. Sorry. I'm going on.
The only people that are going to be walking there that aren't going to the building are going to be the people from Metropolitan Apartments and the few other smattering of residential buildings that are along between Third and Fourth. Because there's no reason to cross over there unless you live in those particular blocks between 101 and the highway.
Which then maybe gets us back to, does retail really work? So, yeah. Okay. We're turning these things over.
So, thank you all.
I have a few more comments.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I had a few more about this. Looking at the area in front of the residential, I'm looking at these renders and I'm trying to figure it out. I think there's, like, really teeny benches, maybe? And I think this, just echoing my previous comments, because Humboldt feels more residential and feels a little bit safer from like a car traffic situation. I think that is where people would be more likely to sit. You know, the dog walkers, like, the people who live in that building, you're waiting for your friend to come out the front. And so that's why, it feels a little bit like a lot of thought has gone into the seating and the benches and the landscape on Third. And that Humboldt feels a little bit more like an afterthought.
You mean Eldorado?
Sorry, Eldorado. No. And so, yeah, I would turn the dial up on the hardscape and seating there.
And Commissioner Nugent said right at the outset, the where it goes depends on what it is. And so I think you're right. Eldorado's quietest, most likely to offer a safe haven. And I'm no retail expert again. I don't think you're going to get any, you're not going to get enough retail traffic on Eldorado at all. So then it's a different use.
Right.
It's, daycare is mentioned, it's more of a community use and less of a commercial one. So maybe there's two different ways to try it. And I think you definitely, as you go in Eldorado, that's the best place.
Even if there's no retail or other use there, I think just a little bit more thought around the seating, because I think that will be the most pleasant area to sit. And then, I had one more, but I think it might work better under other aspects, so I'll save that one.
Okay. Thank you all. I think it's exceedingly difficult to program an area in a built-up urban setting that is exposed to traffic and noise and make it a quiet and peaceful place that you want to go to. I can think of many times being in areas where my lunch table was set next to a parking lot, and that really didn't fit well with me. And that was actually relatively quiet compared to the situation that we're looking at here. For me, what makes the pedestrian experience pleasant is a large canopy of trees, some unique and interesting details on the buildings. I like the layout of the benches or the designs of the benches that you've shown. I like the bamboo wraps in the area that it's shown, or the bamboo. I think lighting is very important. If we want to talk about safety, bike and sidewalk are extremely important to me. And it's going to be very interesting to see what happens with the bikes. I live near the Bay Meadows Development, and I have gone down there quite a few times for coffee in the morning. And it's a pleasant experience until the leaf blowers start going in the plaza, and it ruins the whole experience. So I think it's a tough thing to actually pick the right spot and have it quiet enough where people can have a cup of coffee, eat their sandwich, and enjoy some of the scenery. I like what I've seen so far, but I think more will come as we work through this. Does the building accomplish the transition to the downtown retail area? I can't say if it does or doesn't. It's hard to tell. How does the building accomplish that? It's another challenge. I really do hope there is some way to get a little bit of retail there, because I think that's what brings people to those neighborhoods. And if it's serving the adjacent neighborhood to the east, all the better. So that was my thoughts on site plan and landscape. Should we move to other aspects that are pertinent to this project?
Thank you. Through the chair. I had one other that was in my mind that has come up but didn't really fit into any of the categories, and that's the residential parking. And this is as much of, I don't know, it's my perspective and opinion on it. When I look at the idea to, so, you know, you could have no parking, AB 2097, right? So there's that. If you're going to provide parking, you can either build it yourself or what are the odds that you have, and I'll take the applicant's word for it, that you have an underutilized existing parking lot directly across the street, and you kind of control it? So this is kind of a sustainability-related comment. When you don't have to build the parking because it's already there next door, that means you don't excavate out for a basement. So you have way less greenhouse gas emissions. You don't have trucks driving back and forth. You have less particulate matter. You don't have the embodied carbon in the concrete. You, it's, there's so many, to me, and sustainability upsides to not having to build the parking that it makes me, and I don't know that it matters in this project based on some of the state laws, but it makes me kind of in favor of it purely for, like, its efficiency of reusing, you know, an underutilized resource that was environmentally taxing to create, and now you don't have to do that again. And to me, and I remember when they were excavating out for the trag site because I lived on the truck route. It was during COVID. I worked from home. I was there. I saw every truck, and I remember all of it. So if I was living in that neighborhood, the idea that there was actually a clever way to reduce the construction impacts, to me, it just is a nice thing. And that was my only other, was kind of being in support of that, assuming it all can work out. And I know some people maybe have just saw the eight spots and thought there wasn't any other parking contemplated. But that, to me, seems like a pretty good solution. So, anyway, I think that was my only other.
You're going to do what you're going to do. We're going to do what we're going to do. But I do want to encourage you to look at AB 2011. You're not going to have to excavate two levels down for a parking garage. It's going to be a cheaper building to build. I have no idea what the office market's going to be five to 10 years from now. Maybe it'll be great. Maybe it won't. It's not something that I am an expert on. So you're going to invest the money that you are into an office project, and you clearly feel confident in that. I'm not here to be able to ascertain whether or not that's a good judgment, but there's obviously lenders out there that will believe that if you're able to do this. But there's definitely a need for housing. And you are providing housing on this site up to the maximum that's allowed under our current zoning plus density bonuses. But you could do more, and you'd probably have less risk, in my opinion. So if you go with this office mixed-use plan, I do recommend highly that you change the architecture overall. I'm actually, the massing is what it is. I mean, you're going to do, you're going to take the density bonus law. You're going to get those waivers. So make it something that people will look at from a distance and be like, that's San Mateo, like they do with Casa Baywood and the hotel downtown. I mean, yeah.
Through the chair, I had one other thing, which is also parking-related. I won't repeat what Commissioner Wiggins said, but one thing I was thinking about was the comment that retail is hard to support without parking. There are other developers and property owners in that area in downtown who do, I don't know what it's called, but they open up their commercial parking after hours. They think shared parking, thank you. I think it's managed by the city. And so that's one option to consider, you know, if there is pressure on the residential to let after-hours people park in the commercial parking or, you know, during business hours, presumably you would have demand for the retail, if it's food, from the workers in the building. And then after business hours, you know, if you make the parking available for people to park, you might attract more people to that retail after business hours. So one thing to consider is shared parking and flexible parking and how that might better support the uses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. Thank you. I think I've made myself perfectly clear what I would like the use to be, and I would hope that the applicant would be able to do that and serve the community and make a decent profit. Since this is a study session, I'll throw out my wish list. Either way, whatever's built there, I'm assuming it will be all-electric. I would like to maximize solar. I would like to have a rooftop garden for residents and possibly any cafeteria. I'd like to have onsite gray water use, childcare on the ground floor, passive heating and cooling, net-zero billing, low embedded carbon concrete, porous hardscape, bike lanes and pedestrian safety, residential over-commercial in one building, adhere to the city gateway guidelines, increase the open-out space, and considerably less parking. Any more comments or suggestions for the applicant?
I'm coming with a wish list next time. Thank you.
And for that, I will close that item, and we'll go to announcements. Thank you very much to the applicant for hanging in with us.
All right, I can provide a few announcements for the commission. So first of all, I'd like to start with some project updates. There's good news. We just released the general plan for public review. Hopefully you all received a newsletter in your mail that went out to every resident of the city. And we are looking at doing our next phase of outreach in August and September on the draft general plan, and also looking at releasing the draft environmental impact report in August. So making progress on that project. Similarly, for the housing element, we anticipate release this week for public input before we submit to HCD for the third round of review. The objective design standards, I already mentioned that we are also looking to release that draft for public review this week. And then moving on to planning commission items for our next meeting on August 8th, the ODS, the objective design standards, would be coming to the commission for review and input through a study session at that meeting. We are also looking to do a code amendment that would probably also be scheduled for that meeting to allow for our planning application extensions. I do want to check with the commission if you would be amenable to a 6:00 PM start time for that meeting, just given that, you know, ODS is on the agenda and probably will lead to a robust discussion. So would that work for y'all? Okay, great. So we will schedule that meeting itself. Like, we'll cancel the 7:00 PM and just start the whole thing at 6:00 o'clock. The other items for August, we are looking for a joint planning commission and sustainability and infrastructure commission meeting on August 22nd for a workshop, like, an informational item on the One Shoreline Plan. So that'll be led by city staff and will be supported by the One Shoreline Agency. And then in September, we are also looking at hearings, or rather, I believe there are hearings, on the general plan, on the draft general plan. And those would have a 6:00 PM start time. Want to check again the September meetings? Does the 6:00 PM start time work? Okay. I think the August 22nd, we'll stick to the 7:00 PM start time because that's the only item on the agenda. But for the September meetings, we'll target 6:00 PM. Quick, other quick updates. So the city council, at its July 17th hearing, adopted the Concar, the ordinance for the Concar extension, or rather, approved the ordinance for the Concar extension. It's going to go for a second reading at the next meeting. Similarly, they also moved forward with code amendments that relate to the safety gate provisions. This was something that we started after the Dragers project to look at how we can improve our safety gate requirements to allow for more flexibility in parking and shared parking across mixed uses. So that was also approved, and it's going to second meeting, next meeting. We also took a third project that was a streamlining for city projects for planning application modifications, as well as some clarifications in the codes relating to height and bulk standards. So that went as a package, and that also was approved by city council and scheduled for a second reading, next meeting. I think that wraps it up for my updates.
The commissioners? In that case, the meeting's over. Thank you, or a joint.